Okay, all right. Well, thank you all very much for your patience and we apologize for keeping you waiting. I hope you all went out and had a lovely dinner together while waiting.
Not yet.
Waiting for that school board to somehow get its work done. I'm sorry. All right. So, Dr. Bray Brown, would you like to introduce our wonderful panel here?
I just want to tell you, we are saving the best for last.
That is true.
Right? And I, we are saving the best for last. I know the board, there's a lot of things. I cannot be prouder of what you're going to see and hear and feel of what is going on in this system. We've been talking about equity for the last two years. We appointed Francisco as the Chief Equity Officer and many of you said, Scott, please come and let the board see what we have been doing. We have not been staying in place. We have not been status quo and I am proud for you to see the body of work that this team and many others who are not here today have been doing. And you're going to get a chance to hear firsthand from the folks in the field. They can say what they want, answer as they feel, answer your questions to know what is going on in the ground in Fairfax around equity and I couldn't be prouder. So, Dr. Doron, I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you and I apologize for a cold that I have. So, I'm really excited to be here, finally coming before the board to share with you after one year. So, what you're, first of all, there's a lot of information in our presentation and in our attachments. We're not going to get to touch all of that, one because of the time and two because there's so much. So, I really want to go quickly through as much as I can in the presentation to really get to what I think is the most powerful part of this presentation and that's hearing from all of the people here about how this work has impacted them, has impacted their students, their staff, their colleagues, their parents and their community. So, you'll hear in a moment from Mr. Hazard, who's a sixth grade teacher at Mount Vernon Woods Elementary School. Colleen Eddy is here to answer questions about a lot of the instructional work that's been going on at an ISD. She's our Coordinator of Social Studies. We also have Casey Quigley, who is a Sosa at Hayfield and so a lot of the work that's been done with regards to supporting our students. And then we have a team here from Woodson High School, our Assistant Principal, Mr. Hewen and Ms. Black, who is the Equity Lead at Woodson High School. And a Principal, Ms. Castillo, who's here and representing all of the different voices. And then you'll also hear a second part of our presentation. It was combined that we would also share with you an update, excuse me, on our ombudsman office after having been in place for one year. So, we're really excited also. Nina Thomas is at the table if there are questions about a lot of the great work that's been happening and all of her team or they were here at least, some people had to leave at one point, I'm not sure, I think they're all here. All of our Equity Cultural Responsive Team is in the audience. We have some Equity Leads in the audience. We have a Director, Executive Director of Office of Professional Learning, our Assistant Ombudsman in the office, so we have in the audience. So, we have a lot of folks who are also here to represent. We had more, so I apologize, some of them had to leave since it was going to start at 3:30, but they were really disappointed to leave and they wanted me to let you know that they were sorry that they couldn't stay. But one thing I want to start with is people often ask, well, what is equity and what are we working towards and what are we working on? What's really important to note is that equity for us is not something separate. It's part of our work and what we have grounded all of our work in is two main documents. Our One Fairfax Policy, on the screen you see the definition of what equity is and there's a lot of people that will give you a different definition for equity. This is an official one that we work towards. I'm not going to read it to you, but it's up on the screen. And then we've also grounded our work in the Strategic Plan. We often get asked, what are your measures? How do you know you'll make an impact? How do you know that this work is being meaningful and is making a difference? We align all of our measures and all of our work to the Strategic Plan metrics around student success and caring culture. And so, that is how our presentation is set up tonight to give you an overview of the components that we have been working on under student success and under caring culture. So, again, the Strategic Plan is our driving document. The metrics, the goals and the outcomes are really important part of our work. So, thinking about student success, there are three main areas that we have focused on and you're going to hear a lot about that from our panel as well as I'll give you a brief overview. One, we've done some curriculum review and revision and mainly in the area of social studies, which is why Ms. Eddy is here. We have also created some resources for our schools and for our teachers and our leaders and you'll hear from some of them, some of those tools that they've begun to use. And we have built the capacity of educators. We provided professional development and training and learning to help build our educators around what it is that we need to do to reach that goal that you saw on the first slide, meeting the needs of every child. So, some of the things that you'll see that we have begun to do, we have, it's very important before we begin to get into this work that we really build that foundation of knowledge and that we really spent some time thinking about what are the skill set that we need to see in every classroom, in every leader, in every office and every department. So, in order to do that, we need to do a lot of professional development. Here's just some of the highlights of some of the things we've done. More than 70 curriculum leaders have participated in five weeks of learning around engagement, around strategies for cultural responsiveness, around thinking differently, pedagogy and new resources for that. We've also done, 80 teachers and librarians have engaged in learning about Colonial Virginia and thinking differently about how we might support that content. We had approximately 80 fourth grade teachers that participated in this, which was two teachers from every elementary school and two teachers from every elementary school would be a part of cohort this year and we're really excited about rethinking Virginia Studies. In particular, looking at our Colonial Day also as an idea of how we can redefine that and make sure we're being inclusive of all students and all families while telling our story. We've had over 100 leaders from our central offices who've begun to learn more about how we can develop and write our curriculum in a way that's meaningful and supporting all students and all families. We've done a lot of curriculum review and regulation review. So, again, as I said, primarily it's been focused on social studies because there we saw a good beginning for the relationship of issues of race and culture and identity and how we can have an influence in making sure that we're meeting the needs of, again, all of our families and our students. I'm going to sound like a broken record for a reason because that is what we're trying to do through all of this work. We also have a lot more work to do. This is only one year and a lot of our year, first year of this work in terms of what we're sharing with you today has been the creation of things and they're not fully implemented in every single school and in every single office and that's our charge to make sure we do that. But we spent this year beginning to develop a lot of good resources. We also begun to look at our materials, our basal resource materials, which are textbooks and materials, particularly in science and English this past year. We looked at how we can make sure that they're more inclusive. And new tools are continuing to be created for, to support culturally responsive decision making and you'll see some of those tools are actually on Board Docs for your review. So, a couple of them, here's just a partial list. The Design Principles of Cultural Responsiveness, dos and don'ts of teaching about race and culture. Again, these are actually documents you can pull up on your, on Board Docs and go deeper and we're certainly open to answer any questions you may have about them. A whole cultural responsiveness Google site has been developed for our teachers to help them think about this. We have begun to look at Regulation 3280, controversial issues and making sure that we are helping provide more clarity and guidance around those. And then also, we're very excited and you all know about the creation of our Equity Profile, which is another tool that we've created and that is the transparency for our community. The first tool that I'd like to discuss a little bit more about, and if you can't see it on the slide, there isn't a PDF attachment on your, on Board Docs where you can actually see this document, is something called the Design Principles of Cultural Responsiveness. This is a product of a collaboration and primarily in instructional services and curriculum writers who came together last fall to help identify and list cultural responsive instruction and curriculum, what are the elements of that? And so, you'll see five elements that were developed on this slide. The main idea of this tool and this document is to convey that the decisions that we make about how and what we teach directly impact the students that we're teaching and we need to make sure that we're inclusive of who those are and what we're teaching. Our relationships with students are not separate. Our relationships are a part of the curriculum. People need to feel that they're a part of the curriculum and they need to be interwoven into the curriculum. So, this is a phenomenal tool that's been developed. Cultural responsiveness also is not a checklist that you can just give someone and say, if I've done these things, then I've accomplished it. This is really strategies and ideas to help our teachers and we have one teacher here who certainly can talk a lot about how this has impacted his work and he also was a part of our writing of the curriculum over the summer, so he can talk about that as well. Also, what's exciting about this particular document is, and we've become a leader in the Commonwealth, but we've also been joined by Arbomell, Virginia Beach and Charlottesville, who've joined us in this work and helping to develop this document and actually engage in this exciting work and we're going to continue to do that as we move forward, thinking about Virginia history and social studies. Two additional documents that, again, each of these is a separate attachment on Board Docs. If you're interested in looking at them, you can pull them up. I know it's hard to see on the slide. But really, as we think about supporting anti-bias and anti-hate curriculum, I know many of you have been very interested in thinking about what are we doing and have we been doing enough? We have more we can do, but some things that we've begun to do is a dos and don'ts of teaching about race, culture and identity. And this offers explicit guidance to teachers for fostering empathy and how do you create that environment through your instruction. Then there's the Controversial Issues Toolkit and Unit Planner. This is actually an Intranet website that we have created into a PDF, so it's quite lengthy and it's a useful area for teachers to go and support their work as they think about many of the controversial issues that are happening that we read about, that students hear about, whether it's in the media or something that's happening in current events. And so, it's not explicitly supporting teachers around anti-bias or anti-hate in terms of a curriculum, but it's helping guide them with things to think about and consider as they review that. So, as you can see also on the slide, there's much more work that we plan to do and a couple of goals that we're working towards moving forward this year is professional learning opportunities around anti-bias and anti-hate and really creating more student-facing resources with that explicit goal. There's a lot of things out there in many other parts of the country and other school divisions, so we're looking at that. We don't have to create, reinvent the wheel always, but we want to make sure that we're pursuing a curriculum that prioritizes cultural responsiveness and make sure that we have telling the stories of all of our students and not just some. And right now, we see in social studies, as they've done this review, that many of our students are left out of the story and they don't see themselves in the curriculum. And as they're learning about the curriculum, they're not learning about themselves and that is a deterrent to many students and it causes them to disengage at times. It can create behavioral issues at times and it can cause many, many student achievement issues and a tribute to students not wanting to learn. And so, we have to be mindful of that. So, this team has done a phenomenal job of working in that and particularly in instructional services. In addition to those tools, we also worked with Dr. Ivy and the Regional Assistant Superintendents to help refine our school improvement plan and we made sure to work with each of our schools to include goals around cultural responsiveness, goals around closing the achievement gap drivers that you see here. And it's something that, again, we've begun to do, we need to do better at, but it's a beginning point where now the actual template lends itself to have those kinds of conversations about how schools can actually write specific goals that are specific to the needs of their school community. We've also created a Closing Achievement Gap Protocol Guide that helps teams to do that, to look at what are the areas that they need to look deeper at and dive deeper into. And so, we're really, really excited that thinking about the Closing Achievement Gap Framework is not just something that's been out there, but now it's being incorporated into conversations, it's being incorporated into actions and it's being incorporated into plans of all of our leaders. The second area that we really think about when we think about equity is looking at Strategic Plan around caring culture. We have done a lot of system-wide support in that area. I'll talk about that in a moment and we have a Sosa here who will be able to talk about some of that work. We've also continued to develop and build the capacity of our leaders, more professional development around caring culture. And we've provided direct school support and I'll talk a little bit about that. So, for system-wide support, as many of you know, and thank you again for supporting our Equity Resource Plan, which was the last time we were here before you, we have Equity Leads in our schools. These are existing staff, it's not additional position, these are existing staff. 298, 260 are in schools and 38 in central offices and we've been able to provide them with 12 hours of professional development. We have an Equity Lead here and I think there's some in the audience as well, I'm sure would be happy to talk to you about how that has made a difference at their school and for them. We've also had three modules around cultural responsiveness. Module one was a couple of years ago, that was an online module, which was really a foundational piece. But now with these resources, we've been able to move from an online to an in-person, which is much, much more meaningful and interactive and allows our staff to really engage in a different way and go deeper in their learning. Module two, which was on Guiding Principles of Cultural Proficiency, which laid down the foundation more around what cultural proficiency means. Module three, which we're very, very proud and very excited about, which just happened this last March, all school staff, and I want to emphasize, all school staff participated, from the custodian to the cafeteria worker, to the office staff, to the teachers, in this professional development about building common language and effective practices around cultural responsiveness. And I want to tell you how powerful that was. Even on the first day of school, I was out visiting schools and I went to the cafeteria and I had two of the lunchroom staff come up to me and one hugged me and started crying and this was just recently and this happened in March. And thanked me for, all of her 20-some years working in SCPS had never been a part of a professional development alongside other non-cafeteria staff and how it has touched her and it got her to think differently about the family she served and the students she served. I'm getting a little emotional because it was emotional and it really gave me pause to, cause to say, how important this, we talk about caring culture in the Strategic Plan, but if we're not building that within our own staff and it's just talk, then we're never going to get anywhere. And so, this was really an exciting opportunity for us and we look forward to the future modules, which I'll talk about in a moment as well.
So, Francisco, just for the board, to just pause to hear what he just shared, right? Tammy, I heard say a little earlier, difficult conversation. This is where we are. Look at where we're going and it's great, but acknowledge that in March, for the first time ever in the division, did we have training that brought everybody in that school together and say, we're one family, we're one unit and we have a goal of excellence, equity and effectiveness for every child. And how are we going to do that work together? First time ever. So, thank you, Dr. Doron, but to know that that in itself is a major cultural shift in the system. Sometimes we've been siloed in the system, sometimes we've been siloed in our schools and this is breaking down those barriers.
And thank you to all of the board members because we would not have been able to do that if we didn't have the resources and the Equity and Cultural Responsive Team and the Equity Leads who facilitated this work at each school. And I want to thank all of our Equity Leads because they created those spaces in each of their schools in a way that was very meaningful. If we didn't have that, we would not have been able to do that. We also supported, the Office Personnel Advisory Council had their first conference since 2001 and only their second one ever, according to what they told me, where we brought all office personnel staff together and they received professional development about how to create a welcome and inclusive environment. And again, they too also shared how powerful it was and thankful they were to just have the opportunity to come together with other colleagues and learn about this and that was really exciting. We've had two Equity Symposiums with over 1,200 participants. Many of you were at both of them, some of you were at at least one of them. The one on 2018, where we brought Dr. Sharaki Holly and he spoke to us around cultural responsive pedagogy and thinking about the classroom instruction that we need to do differently for our students. And then this most recent Equity Symposium where we had a panel of students talking about student voice and hearing directly from them the impact and the power of what we can do, what we haven't done. We heard some real hard stories about what, how, when we don't do certain things, the impact it can have on them. So, really excited about that. We've also, for our principals and our leaders, we've had a common theme for the last year in all of our all-county principal meetings to be focused on equity. So, we've had breakout sessions related to going deeper into some of the tools that I've been sharing with you. We've also brought our Equity Leads and our principals together and did a training with them. We partner with the Office of School Support. Each of our Equity Cultural Responsive Specialists are assigned to a region and they're assigned to Mark Greenfelder's team, one of, and they worked together collaboratively, visiting schools, providing another lens and a perspective on how we can support our schools in project momentum and those that are receiving Office of School Support. And then we've collaborated with Dr. Ivy and our regional leadership team to provide professional development for principals as needed by the various region needs and also to support principals in developing their equity, excuse me, their improvement and innovation plan. We've also worked closely with Department of Special Services and helped them as they're beginning to work and you've all heard recently, in particular our discipline study, we talked about our movement towards multi-tiered systems of support and the need to really think differently about how we're providing a different lens to include academic, behavioral and attendance as an area of focus when we think about how we're going to support struggling students. And so, the team has been working very closely with Teresa Johnson and her staff on helping support that work. We've also been able to provide five sessions for our Sosas on professional development to build culturally responsive academic behavior and attendance supports, different ideas for that, things like utilizing data through an equity lens, how do you be aware of stereotypes and biases, how do you think differently about students, how do you create equitable in classroom environments where students are all feeling respected? And then very, very excited also about how we partnered with the School Liaison Commander and the Fairfax County Police Department and we provided our school resource officers with a two-hour professional development on bias, stereotypes and prejudice. And they also were very thankful and I've also heard from them, matter of fact, also on the first day of school, I had a couple of them stop me and thanked me for this professional development, which really got them to think differently about how they interact with students and families and parents. So, very excited about that work too. We've done a lot of work around bringing school teams together through cultural proficiency cohorts. We've been able to do up to this point 51 schools. Our Equity Leads have been able to work with our school leadership teams and help develop Equity Teams. Again, this is just beginning. We have a lot more work to do in this area and we want to do more. And so, again, after one year though, we're proud to say that we've been able to accomplish this. We've developed an Equity Reflection Tool and we've uploaded a copy of what that looks like for you on one of the, on Board Docs as an attachment, if you're interested in looking at that and it helps schools to do almost like a self-reflection. It says on the document Equity Audit, it's not used as an audit where we go in and audit, it's used as a means of schools doing their own reflection about what they see at their individual site. So, I encourage you to look at that document. If you have questions about that, we'd be happy to answer that. Trying to go very quick because of time, so I'm sorry and you all know I could talk a lot. So, with that, those are just some of the highlights of a lot of the work we've done this first year with these resources. Remember, it's only been one year having this group of resources that we've had. We have a lot more to do, but the good news is we've had an impact, we've developed resources and now as anything and a lot of things in Fairfax, we need to make sure that it's being consistently implemented and how are we working to ensure that all schools are utilizing them, the resources that are created? So, with that, I'm going to pause and I'm going to start with Ms. Castillo from Lemon Road Elementary School, who's going to share with you a little bit about how this work has impacted her and her role as a principal. Then we'll hear from Mr. Hewen as an Assistant Principal, Ms. Black as an Equity Lead, we'll go on down the line, we'll hear from Ms. Quigley as a Sosa and then we'll hear from Mr. Hazard as a teacher. Ms. Eddy and Ms. Thomas are here for questions later if board has of them. Okay? So, at that's time, I'll turn over to Ms. Castillo.
All right. Thank you for having me. I get the opportunity to sit in front of you, but I could not be here today without two ladies behind you. We have Kim Amunabar, who is our, sorry, I get her title wrong every time, her Educational Specialist and Jess Allright. She's a sixth grade teacher at Lemon Road and she is our Equity Lead. And together, we've been doing this work and I'm very fortunate that I began my principalship with this lens. And Kim Amunabar and I have actually known each other for probably 12 or so years. We met as we really dove into the Young Scholars Model through Advents Academics and then as she transitioned to her work with ESAL students, I transitioned into administration in some Title I school environments, so we continued our journey. So, as I became principal and she became into her role, we kind of continued our ongoing collaboration. So, some highlights that I can speak of from our first year in this work is that Lemon Road, for the first time, participated in a cultural proficiency cohort. We had 11 different staff members come, ranging from classroom teachers, AAP center teachers, specialists like our PE teachers, our parent liaison, office staff members, just to get a good cross-section of our school so that the work was sustainable and it didn't just reside in one pocket of our staff community. We continued the work, so Jess helped lead after our cohort ended, a follow-up meeting in which she has put together in collaboration with the team, an Equity Plan for Lemon Road that I'll touch back on. As we started the journey on the first kickoff week of August 2018, one of our unconference sessions was all on equity and that was really powerful because not only did it start off our school year with this as an important lens, but it allowed a new principal, a new Equity Lead and a new Educational Specialist to really take the temperature of where we were. And we, we had a few surprising moments in those dialogues, but it gave us our starting point. And so, I can say that one year later, we've made tremendous growth and it's been, because it's been embedded into the work that we've done. We collaborate with our PTA as we think about, some of our activities that are the least culturally responsive aren't always the ones that are driven just by our staff, but as we think about our fundraisers and our evening events and the activities that we offer our children, those sometimes are the farthest from our true equity goal. We also, in collaboration with this team, is our Family Engagement Specialist. So, that particular group with our parent liaison has really helped make this Family Engagement Equity Committee that meets regularly and consistently about the year. As far as my Equity Lead, she helps hold me accountable and in my, in my day, 300 things are piling up and she's always there to remind me, okay, and as we do this, we're going to insert, so that equity is always part of what we're doing. It is truly never one separate thing and that's how it's become so sustainable and continuing to grow in our school community. Those opportunities that we got to engage in as principal and Equity Lead, like the Harvard Professional Development, again, re-centered our work and that really tipped off our spring and as we were going into thinking about our school innovation and improvement plan, I said it backwards, but it reminded us that honestly Equity is what drove the work. So, in a Level Four Center School, you know, we could continue to try to get to that 98% pass rate or 99% pass rate, but really what we needed to do was refocus on our students who were not having an equitable opportunity at their education. And so, we rewrote our school improvement plan this year, focusing on our students with disabilities, focusing on our English language learners and this was a huge change that our leadership team brought to me and I didn't need to take it down to them and that's really due to the work that we've done as a committee and as a group this year. Okay, I have lots of notes, but I'll keep them really short. So, as I think about then, the impact that we've really had and how it's gone, not just from top down, but bottom up, we have a very optional book club group that Jess is now helping facilitate and last year, the staff recommended reading the book Blind Spot and they wanted to engage in the work to understand what that hidden bias is in education, in the classroom, but also just what we walk around with and live on a regular basis. We've been making big changes, but also some of the smaller ones are some of the ones that people notice. And as we took a fresh walk through the building, we recognized that we did not, on a regular basis, exemplify all of the true faces of Lemon Road. So, we had our photographer, Donnie Biggs, came out. He took amazing photos of all of our students and our families and we got them printed and framed and hung and we have had more positive remarks about really showing the true face of our school and our families feeling actually welcomed and celebrated when they walk into our building. And that's just one of the ideas that we have and they all cost a little money and they all take a little bit of time, but we feel like over the course of the next few years, the Equity Plan of small changes and big changes are really going to have a great impact on us. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Hewen, from your role as an Assistant Principal at Woodson High School.
All right, thank you. So, I began doing this work really three or four years ago as a Sosa when I was at Woodson. So, I began doing this work really three or four years ago as a SOSA, when I was at Fairfax High School. I remember rolling out Module One, and it was the 18-minute video, and I said to my principal, we got to do more than the 18-minute video. So, we created like a list of four to five activities. We trained our department chairs, and we had them go back and facilitate small and intimate conversations and lessons with our entire staff, and kind of like, you know, the sentiments from the custodial workers, you know? Everyone came up and started hugging us, and they were saying, you know, it's about time, like, you know, we've been looking for things like this in Fairfax County for years. Module Two, we rolled out something similar, in the sense that we invited Ann Amshneider, I think that's how you say her last name, and the parent liaisons. And so, we gave the parent liaisons a voice, and we had a panel member discussion, so our teachers were able to see, just get things from like a parent's perspective, because many times when we're dealing with our students, you know, we may think that, oh, the parents are not paying any attention to me, or, you know, they don't hear what we're saying. So, that was really a good way for us to build partnerships with our parents. So, with that being said, also, again, a lot of our teachers at Fairfax High School were excited. We also had more than 33 teachers participate in the professional development, the four-day professional development trainings. Again, we led just conversations throughout the time that I was there, in addition to, you know, the Module Ones and the Module Two things that we did as well. But I think for me, it was fascinating. It was just good to embrace our community, it was good to connect with our custodial workers and our food service workers, who felt like they never really had a voice when it came to things like this. So, now, as an assistant principal at Woodson, you know, working with the team and working with the admin team, to just, you know, working with our Cav Congress and our student body and teachers, I'm just excited about the work that we're doing in Fairfax County.
Thank you. Ms. Black, equity lead from Woodson High School?
Yes. Hi, I'm Jordan Black. I'm an equity lead at Woodson, as was said. I actually was a part of the inaugural group, I guess you would say. This is my second year being an equity lead, and I'm truly enjoying it. A couple of things about Woodson. Woodson was one of the first schools to kind of do that cultural proficiency cohort, so we kind of got an early start, and I think that was much needed, because now, as we're getting more resources from the county and attending the professional developments, we can really bring that back. One thing I really want to highlight is, we do have an equity team at Woodson, and I think that is so important in getting the work done. The equity team at Woodson, they're all volunteers, they're representatives from the different departments, and I think it's great that we have unique perspectives, but we have a shared vision, and that shared vision is to foster a more culturally responsive environment at Woodson. Also, I want to highlight Module Three, because myself, along with three other members of the equity team facilitated that at Woodson, and I think that was awesome. Of course, when we heard we were facilitating a module, I was like, you know, I don't know if I can do it, but the county provided amazing resources, we went through the training ourselves, it was with all staff, it was great feedback, people were coming up to us saying, this is needed, and essentially, we want to continue the conversation. And I stressed, and we all stressed, that this is a journey, this is not something that's going to be solved right now, but it's a journey, and all we can do is grow. Cav Congress, which Dr. Hewin mentioned, that's something that's kind of specific to Woodson. So, Cav Congress is supported by the equity team. It's a time and a space where we can, like, provide a space to amplify student voices. So, different student representatives meet during return periods, and they talk about where they see inequities essentially, and it's great that we can have these conversations with the students and with the staff, so we're all having the same conversations in one building. I also want to talk about the support that we received from our equity and cultural responsive specialist, Nisi, who I don't think is here, but she's been amazing. And it's been amazing to have that support from her and to be able to call on her when we need her and to be able to brainstorm, you know, solutions and things to bring back to our site. And most importantly, and what I'll close with, I just love that equity is not a foreign concept at Woodson. When we had Module Three, we got to discuss the terminology, you know, surrounding equity, and now people are familiar with it. And when they're looking at their lesson plans and when they're doing anything in the school, I see and I hear that people are looking at things through an equity lens, and I think that's amazing. So, that's kind of what's been going on here.
Thank you. And we now have Ms. Quigley, who is bringing us the perspective of a SOSA at Hayfield, but also a member of their equity team.
Okay. Hi, so I'm Casey Quigley. I am the SOSA at Hayfield. That stands for Systems of Support Advisor. A lot of people are like, what does that mean? What do you do? So, it's kind of a utility player that's at every high school, and shameless plug, middle schools deserve them as well, because I think they could be really helpful. Sorry. So, what we do basically is, we're a utility player that works with the admin team, the counseling team, the security team, and the teachers in the school, to ultimately support the goal of equity and to support the wellness, the emotions, the behavior, and attendance, and academics in our school. So, we worked really closely with John Jacobs to, as SOSAs, he provided the five trainings for us, and basically, what that started for us was the conversation. And when we talked about the book Blind Spot, we talked about different things where we gained our own self-awareness of bias and what that means for us, and we could bring that back to our admin teams, and it started the conversation. And from the conversation and the talking came the planning piece. And I believe at Hayfield, we're definitely in the planning piece, and we're working towards putting it all into practice. One example that we have is, I was able to work with our English team, and what we talked about was, how do we better engage our students in the curriculum? So, the skill sets are the same, but how do we represent our students when we're teaching them in the curriculum? And what we did was, we looked at different books, we looked at different activities that they could do, and we looked at, hey, are the students in your classroom represented in the books that you're reading, in the stories that you're reading? How can we bring maybe some older stories into light, and how can we make them more relatable to our students? And when the team was able to do that, they found that the students were much more engaged. And I know this will be shocking to the audience here, is when students are more engaged, there's less behavioral issues, there's less classroom management. Engaging curriculum is a classroom management tool in and of itself. And so, when we have more engaging curriculum, you have less behavioral issues. And so, also, as a SOSA, I dive deep into our discipline data and what that looks like. And true to Hayfield and true to Fairfax County and true across the country, our students of color are overrepresented in our discipline data, and that's really important. And as we look at those trends, and we look at it from an equity lens, we can go back to the administrative table and say, okay, this is happening in our school, what can we do? What do we need to do at Hayfield? What trainings do we need to do with our teachers and with our students to make sure that they feel represented, to make sure that they feel included in our classroom, in our hallways, in the activities that we offer, in the resources, and how do we make sure that they have access? Because that's really what equity is about, is that access piece. So, we've talked a lot about that. One of our goals, discipline-wise, was to make sure our students are in the learning environment as often and as safely as possible. So, if we can have an in-school suspension versus an out-of-school suspension, if we can have a detention versus pulling a student out of the classroom, if we can have a conversation, and my catchphrase is usually, coaching over consequences, not that consequences aren't necessary, but consequences alone don't always change behavior. So, we need the coaching piece to help our students develop those behaviors that we want, that are ultimately going to help them be successful in the classroom and reach those portrait of a graduate pieces that we've put together. So, as the SOSA and working with John Jacobs, that's what we've done in our SOSA trainings, talked about those things, how we bring it back to our own schools, how we trickle that down into our teachers, into every staff member that works with our students. And as the equity team, we kind of do the same thing. We pulled on John a lot, we had him come meet with our equity team as well, and also talked about how the equity team can be representative in our school, kind of be that voice, because they are, they're teachers, they're in the classroom, they're administrative staff, it's different people, so you get voices on different levels. So, we're super excited at Hayfield as well. We have a super diverse population, and the last thing I'll say is, one thing that was a really big point for us is to make sure that we have staff that represents our students, because that's also another piece. When students see themselves represented in the classrooms, they're much more likely, again, to be engaged in the classroom, and we think that's super important. And if you come over to Hayfield, you'll see that that's been one of our goals in the last couple of years. So, we're excited about the work, and I'm happy to be here and happy to share that with you.
Thank you. And John Jacobs is our equity specialist who was assigned to DSS, the Department of Special Services. So, our equity cultural responsive specialists weren't just assigned to regions, they were also assigned to departments and offices, and he helped develop the SOSAs. So, our last person to share, sixth-grade teacher from Mount Vernon Woods Elementary School, who was also really involved in the curriculum development and some of the tools I talked to you about with regards to the curriculum.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. I'm Jamal Hazard, and I want to begin by sharing what I, how this journey kind of started for me, and what I thought was equity work during the end of my first year of teaching. I was a history major and noticed pretty quickly that representations of marginalized groups were left out of the Virginia Studies curriculum for the most part. There was no real historical context for the content that was to be taught. I often found myself deviating from the curriculum, which was a big no-no, and I faced pushback. And as a result of that, I felt defeated and eventually turned a blind eye to the inequities that I saw firsthand, because I felt powerless. Over the years, I began to see the problems with the curriculum, school and neighborhood segregation, hiring practices of teachers and colors and school leaders of color, our instructional practices, everything about standardized assessments, loss of instructional time, and how those things negatively impact already marginalized communities, and they still exist in the same ways as they did back then. For those reasons, I can no longer divorce myself from the truths that were erased from the curriculum, because those truths are my truths. I'm a direct descendant of people who lived those truths that are erased, and I'm a member of marginalized populations, still surviving the legacy of those truths today, and so are the kids in communities, more importantly, the kids in communities that were charged with serving. This summer, though, has been a revelation of sorts for me, as some of the equity-driven practices I thought I wouldn't experience and had been too afraid to fight for early in my career are starting to take root here in Fairfax County public schools. I've seen and worked with teachers in this county who are really committed to this work. They've embarked on journeys that have taken them out of their comfort zone by challenging the ways public education in the U.S. has functioned for decades. I don't know that myself nor the people I've worked with over the summer would be here, be where we are with regard to equity without the leadership, the vision and commitment of the folks in central office that are driving this work. I'd like to point out quickly, though, that students, how students and teachers are impacted by specifically addressing FCPS's work in decolonizing its Virginia Studies curriculum and its work developing lessons using the C3 inquiry framework over the summer of 2019. I use the term decolonized, because when referencing the work with fourth-grade curriculum, I think the main tenet, truthfulness, or getting to the truth, is only possible when looking at the content through the eyes of those whose stories have been erased, and those are the oppressed people who suffered through colonization. Having teamed up over the summer with teachers from Virginia Beach, Albemarle, and Charlottesville school divisions, designing lessons under the C3 inquiry framework, I learned the impact of acquiring and applying knowledge through inquiry instead of memorizing information, the memorization of information given to children, as would often be the case under school cultures driven by a summative assessment outcomes. In July, I worked with other FCPS teachers to audit the Virginia Studies curriculum, and in August, I had the opportunity to co-lead a staff development for fourth-grade teachers, sharing my experience with the whole group, and co-designing and co-facilitating a breakout session around power, privilege, and bias in the study of Virginia's history. That session focused specifically on evaluating Virginia Studies curriculum and resources through a critical lens. I've worked in other school divisions in Virginia, both as a teacher and administrator and a New York City and central office, and in those times, though there have been programs that identified equity as an issue, there wasn't much meaningful work done, not like the work that's been started by the people in Fairfax County. All school divisions across the country need to be examining their practices, their curriculum, and their way of thinking, because the issue, the real issue that causes the inequities we have in education across the country is rooted in bias. Now, having a framework to work from gives me and other teachers the sense that we have the support of school leadership and central office in this continuous work, and I really mean continuous, it's ongoing, work toward building a classroom culture and hopefully an education system that is anti-bias. With smart, hard-working, and committed people serving here in Fairfax, the school division is in a position now, I believe, to lead the nation in this work. Because of my personal and professional experiences, these opportunities mean a great deal to me. They signal a potential shift in the way we prepare staff, as well as a shift in how we'll educate children. It's not just meaningful to me. Kids really appreciate, and people have said this on this panel earlier, hearing their story told in school. Imagine, for the first time, discovering the history of people who look like you, and when I say discovering, that's precisely what I mean, and this is what a historical inquiry is really about. I'd like to end with this. We've used the term equity quite a bit in recent years, and it seems like we kind of know that it has something to do with fairness, something to do with race, and something to do with poverty. But in order to be equitable, we have to be intentional about identifying, then dismantling the structures that caused and continue to cause the inequities that people of color and other marginalized groups experience in the first place. The work that's being done by this team, in my view, is intentional and is working to dismantle the pieces of our educational system that are harmful to communities of color and other marginalized communities, and I think that's really what equity work is.
Thank you. So, as you can see, there's a lot of work that's been going on and being done, and we brought a panel here, and could have brought more and more, but I wanted you to hear the breadth of, from a classroom teacher, a SOSA, equity lead, principal, assistant principal, how this work has begun to impact what they do and how they've done much, much, much more in a way of inclusivity towards all of our students and our families and our staff members. So, coming up, we have a lot more ongoing work. We're not finished. We have two modules this year. The last couple of years, we've done one module a year. This year, we're ramping it up, we're going to have two. One is going to be on professional learning communities, and that will just be for instructional staff, that's going to be taking place this fall. And then, next spring, we're going to have, like we did with Module Three, all staff come together, where we're going to dig deeper into some of the work from the discipline study and go deeper about how we can support our students. And you heard from our SOSA, discipline isn't always about consequences, it's about those relationships, it's about how we create those spaces for families and students to feel welcome, and all staff need to be a part of that conversation. So, that's Module Five. And then, one thing I'm very excited about, we're not ready to launch it yet, but we're doing final investigation and learning, because we don't want, always want to reinvent the wheel. Some divisions are doing great work, and we want to, we're sharing with them, and they're sharing with us. So, one is student ambassadors. Henrico County has a phenomenal student ambassador program for their secondary schools. Our team has gone out to visit in Henrico County, and we look forward to either in the spring, hopefully in the spring, if not, we'll get it by next year, but we want to get it right, because it's not just simply having an ambassador at each secondary school, it's about making sure that they are brought together. And what they do in Henrico County, they bring them together, and they provide them professional learning as students, to help give them the skills and the toolkit that they need to be able to be the voice for their colleagues and their peers. And so, we're really excited about that. And you heard that we've had two equity symposiums, and we're really excited about those, but those have been district-wide, and so, we would love to move forward to have actual pyramid symposiums that are not just for the whole district, and maybe bring some that are more pyramid-focused, because we do know that every part of Fairfax County has unique needs. So, really, really excited about that. And we invite you to participate in our upcoming trainings, and we would love for you to be a part of any of our modules that are coming forward. You are pleased, welcome to come to a school, to an office, and engage with us. So, with that, that concludes the equity portion of this. And then, as I stated at the beginning, the Ombudsman Annual Report was combined as a part of this, but the Ombudsman Office and the resources in that office are certainly equity resources that were part of the initial equity plan, so it's very fitting. So, at that, this time, I'm going to turn over to Armando Perry, who's going to walk you through highlights and overview of his first year in the role of the Ombudsman, and then we'll open up for questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to share with you what we learned and did over the last year. I'm going to touch upon briefly highlights from my end-of-year report, which were submitted to Board Docs, so that where you can read for more detail, and certainly, I'm available for questions afterwards. Today, I'll be talking about three key points. First, the process for establishing our office. Second, data from the contacts that we received, and also, the top three common themes that came from those parent contacts. As we were beginning our work in establishing the office, it was critically important for us to ensure that our work and procedures were the best practices of ombudsman work. And so, we participated in training with the International Ombudsman Association, we consulted with a number of other K-12 school divisions that have ombudsmen within their structures, and we, of course, sought guidance from Division Counsel and our Chief Equity Officer. As we have our outreach with parents, it's critically important for us that they know that our work is based on four important principles, the principle of confidentiality, independence, impartiality, and informality. What a parent can expect when they call us is someone who will listen, someone who will understand their concern, and will keep that in confidence, so that we can brainstorm understand their concern, and will keep that in confidence so that we can brainstorm strategies, not for what I think should be done, but what their desired outcome is, and that's a key component of the work of the ombudsman. It's also incredibly important for us to help parents and students understand the rules of school. That's how we create opportunities for equity. Access is very important to us, and for that reason, we've ensured that our documents are translated into a number of languages, and we work closely with translation services so that we can ensure that any parent who contacts us has access to someone who can help them and help us in our communication. Again, for parents, what's most important is that they walk, they come to our office knowing that we're not here to solve the problem, because we don't have authority, but what we do have is help them understand how the system works, and they know whom they can get the information they need, and know what all of their options are. The next slide, brief, I'm not going to go through every single one of these, of course, but this is to show you the number of groups with whom we have done outreach. You'll see there's a combination of parent groups, school PTAs, we have advocacy groups, we have employee associations, Fairfax County Public School Offices, and county offices. At the lower right, you will see a shameless plug inviting anyone who's here this evening or anyone in the community watching online. If you work with parents, if you work with students, and you're interested in having us come out to share about the resource of the Office of the Ombudsman, contact us at that email, and we will schedule an event. For example, it might be a place of worship, an HOA, a PTA, or any other type of advocacy group. Our next slide is a graphic representation of the contacts that we received, the 374 contacts that we received from August 1st of 2018 until June 30th of 2019. It's important to know, these are unduplicated calls. While a person might call and have multiple issues, what we've done is we've taken the primary concern and placed that call there. So, you're not seeing, you know, Mr. Smith calling and having his call represented in more than one place, just the primary issue. I'm going to go into more detail now on the top three. As you can see there, special education, school environment, and behavior or discipline. So, I'm going to touch upon those in our next three slides. The most common theme that came to us was about the issue of, the issues of special education, and I've highlighted there the three biggest concerns or questions that parents shared with us. What, the first is their overall review of the IEP process. Secondly, individual student needs and how those student needs are met, and you can see the bullet points in more detail. And then finally, the concern over restraint and seclusion was also one of the most frequent reasons for their call. At the end, at the bottom of this slide and the following two, I've noted division responses. I certainly do not want to give the impression all of this was done by my office. This is all collaborative, and it shows the work that the division is doing. In many cases, we've collaborated or supported these efforts, but we thought it was important to share that how timely it is, so these responses, how they line up with the parent concerns that were shared with our office. So, for division responses, very briefly, you'll see the Twice Exceptional or Two-E Handbook, Dyslexia Open House, and their handbook, the Special Education Task Force for Restraint and Seclusion, and I am very proud to introduce Ms. Dawn Clements, who is the new Assistant Ombudsman for Special Education, who's joined us here this evening. Dawn, thank you for being here. I strategically put her in the presentation so that I have a chance to breathe. The second most common theme was school environment or school climate, if you will. The three primary causes for these contacts were the communication practices between schools and homes, and parents' concerns about those. Secondly, parent access to student assignment and understanding of grading was another area of concern. And finally, responses to situations of bullying and harassment were areas of concern for parents. Division responses include professional development that our office did offer for school-based administrators and office personnel on communication strategies and how to build rapport with parents between school and home. And then finally, the updated professional development that school administrators received on the bullying and harassment management system that was held this summer in Leaders' Need to Know. And very quickly, the third theme of discipline. Three topics again came up for parents who called our office in this area. They shared their concerns over the appropriateness of consequences, particularly suspensions. Secondly, their access to and understanding of the appeal process for out-of-school suspensions. And finally, the impact of referrals to the hearing office upon their children, and it goes into a little bit more detail there. And division responses have included the discipline study, revision of the Student Rights and Responsibilities Regulation over the summer. My last slide is to share with you a little insight into what we have planned for this coming year. You can see first, a number of community outreach events that we have already initiated and are ready to go with this year. They include parent, community, and student outreach. Again, my shameless plug on the upper right, please email me if you or any of your community organizations would like to invite us out, we're happy to do so. And, as you know, in May of 2019, there was a follow-on motion approved by the School Board asking us to develop a plan to support employees with the services of the ombudsman, and I am happy to announce that at the direction of the superintendent, we will begin accepting employee contacts on October 1st of this year, and that will provide an opportunity to be able to gauge the impact and the need for that, and so that you all can make important decisions in the future. And thank you very much, I think it was eight minutes.
Thank you. So, that concludes our presentation, and we, as I said at the beginning, Nina Thomas and Colleen Eddy are also up here, in case there are questions specifically more about some of the professional development around cultural responsiveness, you can help with that, or if there's more questions deeper around the work in ISD, around what's been happening for the curriculum revisions, some of the review, and some of the creation of those tools. Colleen Eddy is here, our Coordinator of Social Studies. So, with that, we will conclude and turn it over to you for questions.
Great, well, thank you very much for that wonderful presentation. First, I have Karen Corbin-Sanders.
Excellent, thank you so much, and this really was a great presentation. I do have a couple of questions, and since the ombudsman was last, I'll start there and then go from there. Loved how you broke out all of the different calls that you've gotten. It would be helpful for us to understand exactly how many in each of those categories. And then, with the restraint and seclusion, were those calls to the ombudsman prior to the incident coming to, or prior to the situation coming to our attention in early March, or were they subsequent to that? So, that's the first question, and then, if you want to stop, we can get that, and then I'll ask the next one.
So, with your, the first comment about data, we can certainly look at disaggregating our data more to be able to provide that information. With regards to restraint and seclusion, the vast majority of them were afterwards. There were, I think, one or two parents who did, who had reached out to us before, who then reached out to us again in response to the School Board, but the vast majority of them were after the School Board request.
Okay, that's very helpful, thank you. Now, regarding the rest of the, with your list of items you're going to be doing, I hope that you will come east of 95, because it looks like it's concentrated more to the west, and I will certainly provide an opportunity for you to come and visit with some of our people. Let's go to the equity piece. I would love to be able to have a list of the, all the individual modules, because you keep talking of Module 1, 2, and 3, but I don't know what they are, so it would be helpful. Additionally, you talk about an equity audit, and I'm wondering if every school in the system has gone through an equity audit, and if not, do we have a timeframe for it? And if so, do we have a trend analysis of what we're seeing more often than others? Then, I have another question regarding the anti-bias, anti-hate curriculum, and how, if we could get a deeper dive as to what that is, because I believe we should be teaching that throughout our K-12 system, because we are seeing both locally and across the country some more hate crimes, and we want to certainly educate kids on things that they may or may not know about in that area. And then, my last question is regarding the fourth grade curriculum. You may or may not know, but we've put together a passport to Mount Vernon and Lee, and there's some curriculum developed with Mount Vernon, Gunston, Poeh Church, Gum Springs Museum, and the Workhouse, and I'm wondering if anybody has shared that with your equity team. So, that's it.
So, we will certainly get you more information on the modules. With regards to the audit, it's called an audit on the document, but again, what we refer to it as an equity reflection tool, and so schools are using it right now more as a reflection with their equity teams, and so that's something we're doing this year, and it's not really meant to gather data for trend analysis, it's more for them to use as they develop their school improvement plans, as they look at what their professional development needs might be, as they work with their equity teams to think about, where are the areas that we need to go deeper in? And so, I know the RAS and Office of School Support work with them on it, but it's not an audit, per se, where we go in and audit them. That was the title of a document that we found that we thought was very useful, but we're not using it in the way of an audit. So, it's being used differently, more of a planning tool and more of a reflection piece. With regards to the anti-bias and anti-hate curriculum in fourth grade, I will let Ms. Eddy talk about that.
So, the work that we're doing in social studies has a lot to do with addressing gaps that are in the curriculum standards for history and social science, and the state is attuned to that as well. You might be familiar with the fact that the governor has recently commissioned a group to look at the treatment of African-American history in social studies curriculum K-12, and we have found the same matters to be true here locally. What we see as deficiencies in the standards of learning manifest themselves in local curriculum documents as well. So, those are the, the attention we've been paying to in curriculum review, kind of trying to right some wrongs, actually, that are due to inadequacies in the standards, and a byproduct of that is certainly attendance to anti-bias and anti-hate, but I wouldn't say that that has, is the specific attention that we are paying in that curriculum review. The work that Dr. Duran shared with regard to the controversial issues toolkit and regulation is probably the closest that we are coming to explicitly addressing anti-bias and anti-hate. And that being said, the work that has been done is in support of the actual regulation, which is around bringing critical thinking and inquiry and civil discourse in the classroom on matters that, over which there's significant disagreement in the eye of the public. And so, in the reality of today's political climate, some of those issues that would be considered controversial and over which teachers would have to reserve judgment can be matters of hate. They can be matters of bias, and so, we do have potentially an opportunity as a school division to make a stronger commitment to anti-bias and anti-hate, and provide some level of comfort and confidence to teachers who are oftentimes eager to address controversy in the classroom, but reticent because they worry about the controversial issue component of those matters.
And I would be remiss if I didn't say that we have a phenomenal resource that you all have purged for us, which is a multicultural resource teacher that works with Colleen Eddy, Dr. Marsh, who unfortunately couldn't be here, but she's really been leading this work, and I think it's important, and I want to thank you for that.
So, as a next step, I would like to have more feedback on exactly what this, what you're finding in this review and what recommendations you're going to have, both to the fourth-grade curriculum, but frankly, across the K-12. I would also appreciate having just a thought piece on what you're finding in the reflection that's happening on a school-by-school basis, if there are common themes that we need to address systematically or system-wide.
Sure. And one way we could also help with that is looking at the goals that people are writing now on their school improvement innovation plans, as it connects to what they're finding through their reflection tool.
Excellent, thank you.
If I may, I know you had another question in there pertaining to the passport to Mount Vernon and Lee districts and local historical sites. So, I am vaguely familiar with the passport that you've mentioned. I'd like to refamiliarize myself with that for potential work with the fourth-grade cohort that will be underway this year. Two teachers from every elementary school will be looking at rethinking Virginia Studies through the lens of equity and cultural responsiveness and in addressing the inadequacies of the current curriculum standards. So, that passport would potentially be an aid to teachers, and we're also working with, in that process, we're working with Gunston Hall, we're working with Mount Vernon, National Museum of the American Indian, National Museum of African-American History and Culture, and we are having teachers participate in field experiences so that they engage in firsthand inquiry and constructing their understanding of the past, as we hope that students will do as well, and I suspect that that passport might help them to transfer that understanding to the classroom, so thank you.
That was the objective behind it, thank you.
Thank you. Karen Keisgamar.
I'm trying to contain myself. As you saw, I actually have waited to hear some of the things that you just described probably about 20 years, so that's all I'm going to say, because I'm going to get emotional. One of the things I want to bring out is that I think that, and I'm sure all of you are aware of the Kenneth Clark research, which I studied many years ago when I was studying, and it had to do with, because of the way our society looks at things, kids were given different colored dolls, and even kids that looked like me chose the dolls that looked like the ones that were being raised in our society. And so, now, I'm really pleased to see that we're starting to pay attention to the impact of that, because I think it's at the root of some of the achievement gaps that we're looking at. I was really glad to hear you talk about engagement and how if kids are disengaged and if they are not learning about what, who they are and where their backgrounds come, you know, their background, then why is it relevant to them? And why would they dare believe that anything could change? So, I am just really trying to be professional here. Glad to hear about the school improvement plans. I'd like more details, because I think, in general, people don't know what equity means. And so, I think my next step would be, how do we get, I know we have documents to read, but I think it's going to be important for this board to understand what you're really doing, because if we don't know what you're doing and we're not hearing about the measurable outcomes of what you are doing, then I think we could run into some problems later on. I happen to believe, I was looking at the Project Momentum documents, and I happen to believe that where you're having these kinds of programs, as well as a greater degree of diversity, I have a feeling you're seeing greater movement with respect to some of these gaps, and that may have to do with folks feeling engaged, feeling welcome, having that focus that you're talking about, so that's awesome. So, I'd like to know a little bit more about what equity leads do, if I could get some more examples. You talked about your, someone who's been working with you for, what, 12 years, and how she holds you accountable. I'd like to hear more examples of what that is. So, let's see. You mentioned Module 3. I don't know what that is, I would love to know. What does it mean to look at a lesson plan with an equity lens? I know that these are all basic things to you, because you do it every day, but I'm sitting here, I think I have an equity focus, and I don't exactly know what you're talking about. And I'm going to give you this challenge. I would love to hear how we can address Colonial Day. I have had parents come to me saying, "This is not an okay day for my kid," and I am not going to tell them that this is, you know, that this is just wonderful, kind of washed, there's no pain involved in that. And so, I know that when my kids were growing up, it wasn't addressed, so I'd like to hear your comments on that, oh, my time is gone. I'll get a, I'll get a follow-up to talk about the ombudsman, thank you.
I can start with the matter of the tradition of Colonial Day. First of all, Colonial Day is not a required part of our curriculum. In fact, at this rate, is certainly a complicated practice, if not one that needs to be explicitly addressed, that's okay. Okay, rewind. So, Colonial Day is not an explicit part of the curriculum, so there's no one in Central Office certainly telling people to do Colonial Day. We are, at this rate, complicating the practice of Colonial Day and helping people to understand the implications of having food, dance, music, inviting people in from the community to recognize colonial Virginia without somehow selling recognize colonial Virginia without somehow celebrating colonization, right? So we have done significant work in providing guidance to schools, and last year voluntary PD that was related to that guidance. This year, the rethinking Virginia Studies cohort, one of the primary aims is to ensure that every school understands the problems with celebrating colonialism, or at least, very least, the complexities of studying colonialism. So every school that hosts a Colonial Day will, in fact, be asked to redesign how the teaching of colonial Virginia occurs in the school. And then they'll actually come back and share the changes that they've enacted at the conclusion of the school year. And I see Dr. Braybrand might have a comment.
No, the nugget was, we went from invitational PD to all fourth-grade teachers, right, Ms. Eddy? Two teachers from every school are gonna get PD with the feedback you just heard from her. So we're diving into the curriculum. We're identifying the areas that we are hearing from our stakeholders that don't feel equitable, that kids don't feel respected. The whole leading with 2020 vision, they don't see, they don't feel seen, heard, respected. And we're beginning to give teachers tools to be able to go back and transform their classroom into a culturally responsive environment. And I applaud Colleen and all of her colleagues in this work. It's not gonna be easy. It's not, everybody's not even gonna agree. Right? I grew up, I learned about Colonial Day for 12 straight years of high school, I mean, of school in Virginia. I went to Jamestown, it was only 10 minutes away. We went, I probably went 50 times, it felt like. And I didn't think through, to be honest, I didn't think through with an equity lens until frankly, too late for you to wanna hear, to understand that there were other messages being sent to other kids that didn't look like me, that I never thought about. But I'm thinking about it now, and I've asked everybody else in Fairfax to begin thinking about it now, too. And it's okay to, we have to give ourselves permission to not blame where we're at, but what are we gonna do different now? Because the blame game is played every day, out in our national conversation. The blame game is not gonna move Fairfax County Public Schools forward. We need to acknowledge where we are, and then talk about what the road is to move forward. And we're giving people the PD and the tools to start to have those conversations in every classroom, every school, every region. So I think it's starting, this is the beginning, like Dr. Duran said, we have a lot more to do. But I didn't really even know about Colonial Day. I was a high school teacher and administrator. I didn't know what a big deal this was until Dr. Duran brought this group to our leadership team, and boy, the discussion was on. So we've been growing as a team, and we hope, like Dr. Duran said, this training we're offering you, we want to become partners with you in doing it, because some of the very conversations you have here, we need you to be experiencing what we're experiencing. We need to be experiencing what you're experiencing, right? And have that partnership. So it's beginning today, and again, Colleen and your crew are doing a wonderful job, and I look forward to the training.
I was just gonna add that we got the list today. We have a few schools that didn't sign up, and thank you for sending the list, and the regions are following up, so that we can have 100% participation.
You had two other questions, and we can provide you more of an overview of some of the things equity leads do, or if you want a quick answer, I'm not sure, I'm trying to be mindful of time, we can just send you that, if that's better for time's sake. But then the other one, why don't we do that? We'll just give you, doesn't respect the time of everybody. But the other one that you talked about was the outcomes for students and the academic achievement. And remember that the Office of School Support, Project Momentum, is in the Equity Office. And so Mark Greenfelder works very closely with our department, he is part of our office. And so we look at equitable outcomes through the lens of achievement gaps, through student achievement. And you all are having your individual meetings, I know, with him, and looking at that. And we're really excited to see how many of the schools where he and his team have partnered very closely with some of our equity culture responsive specialists in the region, you can see where they've identified groups of students that were not meeting, or had an achievement gap at their school, where they've been closing. And now the state has new SOAs for achievement gaps, and we're seeing many schools in the green and the yellow, where previously there were not. So part of our equity work is absolutely around academic performance. And as I started at the beginning, all of our equity work is related to the strategic plan goals and metrics. So student success, caring culture, what you've identified for us as the data points that we should be working for in the strategic plan, that's what our team talks about, how are we helping to accomplish that? We don't have separate equity metrics, we don't have separate equity goals. Our goals in the Equity Office are all those same goals.
And if I could add, every school this summer got a data sheet that highlighted those metrics that are related, the key metrics that we want all schools to look at. And they developed their school improvement plans accordingly. And all of those school improvement plans are being reviewed by the regions as we speak. And in some cases, schools have been encouraged to rewrite or revise those, and in others, they've been approved. But there's a process for that as well.
Thank you, Ms. Palchak.
Thank you. Excited to follow Ms. Keisgamar, because I was about as excited as you were to see this work, especially, and I really appreciate the thoughtfulness and the time spent. And I think, Dr. Duran, you said, to make sure not just that we're doing it, but that we're doing it well, that it's being implemented well. I've been, not here, but at schools, I was so excited this work was happening, and unfortunately, not done correctly, and actually set us back quite a bit. So not only is the intention there, but I really truly appreciate, in the schools, in your teams, with the equity, with the achievement work, with Mr. Greenfelder, that this is, you know, probably not as quickly as some of us would like it to move along, but seems to be going in the right direction. Just, since we have all of you here, a couple of questions. You know, one, I guess, is more toward you and your team, and the other is to anyone who wants to answer. And the first one, I apologize if this was shared, but I'm pretty excited that you've developed this equity audit tool, I forget what you called it. I love that it, you know, kind of models language proficiency.
Equity reflection.
Reflection. It models quite a bit of what I used in language teaching, when we look at, you know, levels of proficiency and improvement. So I guess, A, would love to know how it's used, and, you know, any reflections or future goals for using and implementing it? That's more for you. And then for any of you who'd like to answer, kind of maybe your top highlight, what you were so excited that you thought was like the number-one thing that you were able to do or see in your school or department this year, and kind of your top next step in area for improvement. And before you answer that, so excited we're talking about Colonial Day, and I want to thank Ms. Eddy. You know, I had a parent who reached out to you and talked to me, and I know that it's a work in progress, and I'm excited to see where we move toward getting away from the way it's been done to a more equitable lens.
Okay, I'm gonna let Nina answer the question around the equity reflection tool, because her team has really been the one leading that, and actually helped us define this and develop this tool.
Right. So the equity reflection tool is really about providing an entry point for the equity teams, that we want our equity leads to start to develop in our schools. So to be honest, we have equity leads at both ends of the spectrum. We have some that are just entering the work and understanding equity, and what that means, and we're building their capacity. And then we have those like Ashley has, that are exceptional, and are ready to dive in and know exactly where to go with the work. So the reflection tool is really a place for school leadership and equity leads to start to look at, where can we start to enter the work? And if you take a look at it, it supports you with school-wide equity, and then what does that look like in the classroom as well? So it's really up to the school, and where is the best fit for us to start? And that work will be supported by the equity leads, and then the equity teams to dive in.
Is this being used by all equity teams and schools? Or is this recommended? How do you circle back with them?
So we started to recommend it this school year, but as we move forward, it will be a piece of the professional development that all equity leads will receive, and an expectation that here is your resource for the entry point for all schools.
And it is an attachment on Board Docs. It's called Equity Reflection Tool. If you want to look at it, you can see it's one of the attachments, several pages. So the next question, I think you asked to the members of the panel, one thing that's, one thing about the equity work that has resonated with them the most, and what's one goal for them?
Where they've seen the most success.
Seen the most success, okay. Ms. Castillo, start with you.
I think my highlight is when the school team, the leadership team, brought to the table the idea to completely revisit our school improvement and innovation plan. And the power of that dialogue began at the grade-level CTs, from like revisiting that true PLC structure that we're working to re-center and refocus on. And from the ground up, you know, they came to the meeting, saying, "We need to change this work, because no matter how many times we keep saying it, the same students are thriving, and the same group of students are being overlooked and not given the same equal access and opportunity." So that was my highlight from year one. And the other one is next steps. Next steps is that we are taking a really close look at the pockets of inequities in elementary school. You know, Lemon Road does not have a Colonial Day. I sat in my fourth-grade CT last week, and they were, starting with the Planning and Pacing Guide, and immediately identified the areas that have already changed, based on the work that was done this summer, and dialoguing, because they can't use the same assessments they used last year. They can't use the same teaching structures and lessons, and that's good, because they brought it. And when the opportunity came up for the Virginia, the fourth-grade Virginia Studies teachers to attend this upcoming PD, four out of four of mine are asking to go. And so, you know, they are excited by this work, and recognizing that the things that we've done, just because they've worked before, aren't the way of the future, and they're not the way we're gonna continue to work with our children, so.
I think at Woodson, what we decided to do, because many times when we do our module lessons, it's like one lesson a year. So as an equity team, we met at the beginning of the year, and we talked about like our focus and our goals. And so one of the things that we agreed that would be beneficial to our students and our faculty, is to keep the conversation of equity going. So in October, our principal has blessed us with an opportunity to bring like a lesson to our faculty. In November, we'll follow up with Module Four. And so we're just gonna keep the conversation going throughout the year, whether that's through our return periods, or our department meetings. But I think we also wanna focus on capturing the voice of one Woodson. So that includes our bus drivers, that includes our custodial workers, that includes our librarians, our secretary, our security staff. So everyone that's a part of our community.
Thank you. And when you share, feel free if it's a barrier, or something that, you know, you just want us to know about, that's also helpful.
George kind of mentioned a lot, but I like to give a little bit of my background. I graduated from South County Secondary School at the time, it's now a high school. But I graduated from South County in 2008, and this is kind of a full-circle moment for me. My dad was in the military, so I moved around a lot, but I finally settled here in Fairfax County. And I know what it was like to be a student at a Fairfax County high school and not feel like you belong. And that's kind of why I'm here to do the work. I want students to feel like they belong. We talked about engagement. I want students to feel engaged. I want staff members to feel like they belong. And that's kind of what equity is about, people getting what they need and that sense of belonging. So that's kind of been my high point, that I've been able to bring my experience from being a student in Fairfax County, and kind of share that through the work that I do as an equity lead. So that's kind of been my high point.
So I'm gonna give kind of a, what might seem like a very simple answer, but it shows you how even the little things really matter. We made a push this past year to work with our art department to get murals on our walls. So we didn't have a lot of artwork that was on there, and they were student-driven. So the students in the art department worked on that, and we worked with our digital arts teacher, and he had the students come up with what they wanted on the walls. So we have everything from sayings in Arabic, sayings in our Hayfield Hawks in sign language, to just inspirational quotes. You know, the butterfly wings that everyone wants to take pictures in front of, that you can hashtag. Those are super popular. But something so simple, you can hear the student feedback about how much more of a community it feels like, because of the artwork on the walls. It's student-represented, and it's going to continue to grow, and it will continue to represent the population at Hayfield, which is extremely diverse. So that just goes to show, it's something that seems so simple, just as artwork, but it's made a really big impact on making Hayfield feel like more of a community.
Okay. Thank you. Did we answer all your questions? Oh, one more, one more input, okay.
Well, coming from a teacher's perspective, the curriculum, the changes in the curriculum are huge for me. Personally, I feel more comfortable in the classroom, doing the work that I want to do, that needs to be done. And then, you know, moving forward, it makes me think more about the things that are missing, the issues, talking about issues with gender inequities, and serving the LGBTQ community properly. Those are also topics that, in our history, are left out. So hopefully, moving on, moving forward in the future, we can bring those things into the curriculum as well.
Great. Thank you all very much. Next, Megan McLoughlin.
Thank you. As the social worker on the school board, this is, and also the founding member of the Skipt Policy Team, it's wonderful to hear all of your voices and the great work that you're doing out in our schools, with our families, our students, and employees. It certainly reflects a commitment from the Board of Supervisors and the school board of how much we want to really create an inclusive Fairfax County for everyone who lives here. I just, from a housekeeping standpoint, I just want to tell you all, I'm sorry we squished these together, because I believe so much in the work you're doing, and also the work of the ombudsman. And yes, they're interconnected, but the conversation for us as board members, I have felt is a little schizophrenic, because we want to bounce from the great work that Armando's doing to help our families, to this really rich and deep work. And so I would just say, in the future, to our Chair and Superintendent, please decouple these. They can go back to back-to-back, but I just think pushing them in together, we haven't been able to do, I think, the thorough justice I would have liked, in speaking to our ombudsman and speaking to you guys. But all that said, since I now have only a minute and a half left in my first go-around, I am aware that the Department of Family Services in Fairfax County started as early as 2010, 2011, embarking on a program called Healing of Racism. And they went and sent staff to Michigan to get trained, then it was a train-the-trainer model, and the result was, how do we address disparities and disproportionality? And since then, they've been able to train like 250 employees a year. It's very rich, like six courses, or six classes within each course for that. And so I was just wanting to raise that and see, maybe Dr. Duran, if you're familiar with it, because I also recall DFS had almost like a pre-course that even predated Healing of Racism. But the point being that there is a lot of work to be done, in terms of how each one of us understands this issue, and our experiences, growing up, how we were shaped. And so that reflective work, I think, helps with this. And so again, I wanted to make sure if you guys were aware of the program, and so maybe speaking to, in my mind, that interconnection between what the county government is doing, and then what we're doing, and maybe how they'll complement one another, because for my colleagues, I hope you kind of find it as a pleasant surprise, that Fairfax County Government was already deeply ingrained in this work, even long before our one Fairfax resolution and policy came to being, almost by seven years.
Yes, I am aware of that, and we also have a very close relationship with the county. Matter of fact, tomorrow, Nina Thomas, Leona Smith, Kathleen Wals, are meeting with county staff to talk about. county staff to talk about some of the professional development. We do so, I am, I am definitely familiar with it. Our team though, and Nina can touch on it more if you'd like, has taken elements of that and then elements of other professional learning and build that into what our modules are. And I know that several of the board members have asked for more information about the modules, we'll certainly get that to you. But yes, we are aware of that. We meet regularly with, I meet regularly with Carla Bruce to talk about those things and as a result of our meeting, we realized, why don't we have our staff who are planning these come together? So actually, it's tomorrow afternoon where they're doing that very thing.
That's, that's really good to hear.
Thank you, Ms. Darnett Kofax.
Oh, I, I thought she was going to speak to what they're.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Yes, there's more, all right.
So it's, it's more of a connection with the cultural proficiency cohorts that we are able to bring that content into the professional development we provide. When we want to start to talk about race and bias and power and privilege, it, we need more time. And that deeper dive into that professional development, which is four days over four months and school teams having those conversations is, is a better realm to have those conversations versus an equity lead providing professional development. But that's how we've incorporated those conversations into the PD we provide.
And just to my colleagues, I will forward to you the invitation I received on this training through the county in case any of us would want to attend it and just see what they're doing from the county work. And then I would say, Dr. Duran and Dr. Brabran, if there's any way you can let us know as board members, if we wanted to have an opportunity to attend trainings and, and really benefit from the work that you're already bringing to our employees, I think it'd be helpful to have board members not, more knowledgeable of that work as well.
Okay, and I'll see that as a next step, okay?
Yes, and then one of our slides, we did invite you on September 26th is our next preparation for our next module. We'll make sure we'll get that out to you again and some more. And we would love to have you either come to the, one of the modules at one of our schools or offices or departments. We would love for you to participate.
Great, thank you. Ms. Darnett Kofax.
That's good to hear. We've been asking for that, so thank you. Francisco, Dr. Duran, thank you for this. This is an exciting presentation to go from where we were as a SKIPPED committee talking about this a few years back to that first Equity Concert Conference that we attended. And then, all of you here tonight, thank you for being here. We apologize for the late hour that we've kept you, but we really appreciate hearing from you and understanding how important this work is to all of you as it is to so many of us. And we really do appreciate your answers to our questions, so thank you on that. I do, I have similar questions to Ms. Palcheck as far as, I really liked the school-wide Equity Audit. I think that's a great tool, but I guess I still have some questions and, and you can just wait till I'm done to, because we're on a three-minute time limit here. Like who is filling it out in the building? I understand there's equity leads. I understand it's an assessment tool and, and it's, it's going to be self-reflective, but I guess maybe it's going to be used one way now and one way in the future. I, I'm not sure, but if you can talk to me about that. Also, I, again, as many of my colleagues mentioned, the fact that we're, so many of you feel that we're moving ahead with intentionality, you're having hope and you've got feelings of moving forward. So that is, that is excellent news to us who have, who have worked and wanted this to happen. I love the idea of student ambassadors. And Francisco, is this going to be presented to SKIPPED in any way as a, as an overall thing? So you can talk about that and when that were. And then, Mr. Perry, I wanted to tell you that you forgot somebody up there. You are scheduled to come to Region Three for PTA President's Meeting on October 8th. And I think it's, we're, we're really excited for that. And I do think that disaggregating the data, as one of my colleagues had stated, because what, of course, I mean, I don't need to say this to you, you know that, but basically it will look, once we can disaggregate it either by region or by pyramid, we'll be able to see if there are, you know, potential problems that are hotspots for certain areas, if certain areas are, are, you know, and that's how it interplays with equity issues as well. You know, are there certain issues based upon the concerns that you're getting? Are there, you know, what are, what are the things that we need to work on as a system? So if we can, if you can help me understand better the Equity Audit and Francisco, if you'll tell us when, when the broader SKIPPED community might see this.
Yeah, so I'll start with that. We will be bringing the Student Ambassador concept to SKIPPED. We're still trying to figure out what our plan is around that. We're probably in the middle maybe phase of where we are with that, maybe the beginning.
I even meant more up to, like this whole.
Oh, the whole piece, yeah. So we certainly can do that and bring that to SKIPPED. We did, if you recall, at the May, May meeting or in the late spring meeting, we did give an overview of some of the discipline equity work at the SKIPPED meeting. And so, we certainly can bring more of this there, absolutely. But the Student Ambassador piece, I thought is what you were asking specifically about. That's part of it, that's part of it.
Yeah, that's part of it. And I think that's important. And you said you always, you work with Carla and Jesse and all of them.
Yes, we regularly, Carla and I talk all the time.
Right, so you know, how, how we can do that together, I think.
Absolutely, we will find a way to do that. So I'll let Nina talk a little bit more about the Equity Reflection Tool, which is through the form of the audit, and then Armando can find, answer your second question.
I just want to say that we, I want to be careful with using the word audit for the.
Can we name it, yeah. A reflection tool, what, assessment.
It is very much a reflection tool and to support schools with wanting to use this tool to be reflective and ultimately to craft goals around equity. If you, if you take a look at it, it starts, it starts with just the idea of developing awareness in our classrooms and in the school climate and then all the way to the end of the spectrum with implementing with integrity. So schools having the freedom to look at this and self-assess, right, without feeling judged, but to be able to find an entry point and brainstorm ideas for how we, how they can make this happen and to use their equity lead and their equity specialists to support them with the work. But I really want to go back to not using that word audit because it is, it is about being reflective and in, in essence, providing evidence of how we are providing this practice in our schools.
Well, I, I definitely think you should rename it then because it's, an audit implies something else. And, but, and, and so basically what you're saying is, is you will use your in-school equity lead to do a self-assessment with the, no?
It would definitely be a team and a partnership with the leadership of the school to, to use this reflection tool.
Okay, okay. But there's no, right now, there's no requirement to do it? It's a soft suggestion?
So it is written in our theory of action that equity teams will be developed and use the Equity Reflection Tool to support the work of that team. So we are just entering that phase.
No, I, I understand that. I, but I looked at it and it's a great tool. It's, it's, it's my favorite thing like that I've seen.
It went over very well with principals and it was, it was almost like an aha for some people that are, you know, for those that don't, still don't understand where we're going with this work, this was, this was evidence. This was, oh, I can do that. So it was very supportive.
We'll work and see how we could just maybe rename the top of the document because again, it was a resource that we got from, from other places. We didn't create it all ourselves and it already was called an audit, but we'll look at how we can reframe that. Dr. Brabran wants something.
If I could say, Ms. Darnett Kofax, this is a deliberate approach. Some school districts have done an Equity Eat It, go Google and look, and it's divided communities, it's divided schools, and it's put the workforce on the defensive. We're not here to put people on the defensive, we're here to come alongside, partner with people, but say that we are committed to equity. We've defined it as responsive, caring, inclusive culture where everyone feels valued, supported, hopeful. We want our principals to feel hopeful. Maybe you haven't been doing equity, maybe you've had to recheck, maybe that CLT hasn't. It's not about punishing you for what you did before, but it is about providing PD and supports for you about what you're going to do moving forward in the future. And that, that culture, we have to create an equity culture in moving toward the equity culture, if that makes any sense. We actually have to model the inclusivity. We can't assume some are out just because perhaps their knowledge and awareness wasn't at the level. So we've been intentional about trying to come to the side of our teacher, to the side of our administrators and say, let's take the journey together. Just the same partnership that I've talked about with you, that I want the school board to feel with the administration, is the exact same set of expectations that we're trying to do between the superintendent's office, the leadership team, the central office in the schools. Come alongside, let's grow together, let's go together, and we are going to go toward equity.
Thank you, Dr. Brabran, that was excellent.
Mr. Perry had an answer to her second question.
First of all, a mea culpa for not including the event. It was scheduled after the first iteration of the presentation, so I will certainly.
No worries, I know you'll be there.
I will, I shall, and I appreciate the invitation. With regards to disaggregating information, having it in a way that can be impactful, we can certainly look at our quarterly reports that we share through the Brabran briefing to see if there's a way that we can elaborate a little bit more. But I've also been very fortunate to regularly meet with Dr. Duran, for example, with Teresa Johnson when it has to do with special education. And so, we're able to discuss those issues as they are coming up, as trends arise, so that we're not waiting until the end of the year to say, hey, we learned about this earlier. So there is an opportunity for me to share those, those trends as they, and I meet with Dr. Duran weekly, so the ability to share that is, is there for me.
Great, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Just so that you know who's on deck, we have Ms. Evans, Mr. McElveen, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Moon. Okay, and then a few go-banks. So Ms. Evans.
First of all, I want to congratulate you on a really excellent presentation. This is such critical and exciting work and it's, it's hard to overstate how, how important the work that you've been involved in is, both to, to caring culture and to, and to student success. I think you're, you're really setting the tone and the framework for our schools and for having a very far-reaching impact, not just in our schools, but beyond our schools because we know what happens in our schools. And the tone you set there goes out into the families and into the communities. I'm, I'm sorry, I guess Mr. Hazard had to leave. I was particularly touched by his, his telling us about his personal journey as an, as an educator and I'm sure some of you have had similar journeys, but to hear that he felt he had to turn a blind eye to certain things is a very sobering, sobering testimony. So that certainly is critical that, that we have, have started the process of turning around something like that where someone feels that they can't, that they have to go outside the curriculum to tell children truthful histories and to, to go beyond. So your, your team is just doing, doing excellent and critical work. It's very impressive. I mean, the, the range of things that, that you've done is, is just so very impressive. And of course, this is, how, how long have you been at this, Dr. Duran? Just one year? That's, that's, that's incredible. So congratulations on that. I will, I will mention that the Governance Committee has asked the superintendent to bring back when we review our policies, that every time we review our policies from now on, we want to do it through a One Fairfax lens. And this, this will be the first time that we have done this. I mean, One Fairfax is, is still fairly young and in the past, we have not done this, so this will be a new thing too. So I, I hope, Dr. Duran, that your, your team will be a very critical part of looking at every FCPS policy moving forward. And, and that, that's a major change. That's a major change for FCPS. But we need, need to make sure that every policy, which is in the purview of this board, includes the idea of, of respectfulness and inclusiveness for all of our, all of our children and all of our employees. I will say with the ombudsman, you know, I'm just thrilled to have the ombudsman's office. As, as somebody who advocated for an ombudsman for years without success, I was thrilled and I'm, I'm just delighted with your work. I know I've seen you out in the community. You've been in my community several times. So just kudos to you. I'm delighted to hear your announcement that employees now can use your service as well. That's excellent news. And my time is up, so the only thing I'd say is, Dr. Duran, I would be very interested in coming on September 26th, so please do send us the details of that.
Absolutely, we'll make sure you get that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McElveen.
Thank you, and God bless you all for sitting through this. I know you've spent the equivalent of a full workday here, so we thank you for that. We have to do it every month, so we appreciate your condolences as well. So I will say, just to start out, Dr. Ivy and I had the opportunity to visit Lemon Road on the first day of school and see what Ms. Castillo and her, her crew was doing. I have to say, those are the most beautiful classrooms in all of Fairfax County public schools, so I do encourage folks to, to make it out there.
Thank you, we worked hard at the renovation a long time ago.
Yes. So there are two folks, despite this massive crew that is with us today that are missing from this conversation. The first of whom is the Multicultural Curriculum Specialist and the second is our, our Internationalization Specialist. And the reason I bring both of them up is because in Fairfax County, when we talk about diversity, it's not just white, black, Latino and, and Asian, it is the, the gradations in between. So it's, it's North Africans and West Africans, Mexicans, Bolivians, Vietnamese and Koreans. There, there are just so many pieces to this, this conversation that we have yet to incorporate. So while I'm grateful for the work that we have done, I know that a lot remains to, to be done. And I know Ms. Eddy and others in the system have met with community advocates like Nawah and others who have been really looking at our curriculum from that international perspective and, you know, not just what Colonial Day means to Americans, but what it means to folks that are coming from Africa and, and other places. So that remains an important piece for us to move forward with. And I will say that the, while the Internationalization Task Force did not take on that curricular work, I know that we are working towards that now. So one of the questions I would have just for the group is, how are we incorporating the, the internationalization perspective into this, this work? Have we begun to do that? Will we, will we embrace that as we do all these trainings in all of our schools? And secondly, none of the schools represented here are IB schools, but I know we've, we've begun the movement to PYP and NYPD and many of our, our pyramids. I think that structure really provides a great opportunity to incorporate those international perspectives. So I'd be great, grateful to hear from you on that.
I can share from the perspective of social studies around the work we're doing related to international studies. But before that, I'd like to just comment briefly on the role of Dr. Deborah March as the Multicultural Studies Curriculum Resource Teacher. She is really a phenomenal colleague. I find myself, you know, thinking to myself, what would Deborah do? So she happens to be traveling internationally at this time and so she's not able to be here, but she has been so instrumental in garnering consensus on what culturally responsive pedagogy looks like in Fairfax County public schools by bringing together a large number of stakeholders, both in central office and, and far beyond, to, to define those design principles for cultural responsiveness. And I know that Dr. Duran mentioned how influential that Red and Green Document has been. It is truly a guidance document in social studies, but it is beyond that too. So in mathematics and science, really across the disciplines, those, that red and green chart of culturally responsive pedagogy that Deborah was so instrumental in creating has become very influential and it, and it's been highly coveted by other school districts and cultural institutions that we have cooperated with over time. So I can't overstate her importance to this work. With regard to how our curriculum represents international perspectives, we mentioned briefly that some summer curriculum development has occurred around cultural responsiveness in social studies. We did not elaborate on what other grade levels beyond fourth grade have garnered our attention, but specifically, we have been spending time in World History Two, which the lion's share of the curriculum standards are devoted to a Eurocentric telling of history. And so, we undertook to identify some of those major gaps over the, the summer and the summer curriculum project. And we have just advertised in the, in the coming week, a cohort to work with World History Two teachers. World History II teachers, whether it be regular courses, or AP courses, or IB courses. We are cooperating with National Resource Centers that are federally funded at the universities in the larger community, to work with our teachers and deepen their understanding of international perspectives in the study of world history. So that work is underway, and the work that the teachers do in that cohort will inform our direction in social studies as well. So truly, you know, and if you take a quick look at the curriculum standards in World History II, we see, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, about 10 units that are devoted to the study of European areas and interests, and three units that attend to non-European areas and interests. So this is an area of attention and intention for social studies.
From the elementary perspective, I can share that this is work that's really been embedded into our school culture. I visited a second-grade classroom last week where 25 children greeted each other using nine different languages, and that is a culture that has been built into the school, and it is expected from kindergarten to sixth grade, that the children have the opportunity to speak to each other in their home languages and the languages that they're learning and interested in. As part of our staff handbook that we rolled out this year, it's our expectation that in every classroom, every single parent, or grandparent, or family connection is welcomed in to do a cultural or family share, so that it is becoming more and more a present in our school, all the different cultures that truly make up Lemon Road, and building that sense of understanding and empathy and seeing children for who they are. We are hosting on Wednesday a Room Parent Orientation, which may sound kind of opposite of this. Many times, our room parents are not as diverse as our student body, because they tend to be our more upper-class, have a more freedom and flexibility in their schedules, and part of that is really engaging with them on how do we ensure that every child, every family, is feeling part of those classroom traditions and opportunities of celebration, and then how to invite people in and make sure that everyone are part of that. Lemon Road has been deeply embedded in the work of project-based learning and PBL, which opens a lot of windows and doors into really embracing the international community in which we live. And last year, we had selected Global and Ethical Citizen as really a driver for our school, and our innovation part of our SIP, and we're continuing to dive deep into all of the Portrait of a Graduate Attributes. This year, we have selected the Goal Directed and Resilient rubric, and all the work that's coming from that office is something that comes into every single classroom, and all of our children are assessed using those rubrics in the beginning and the end of the year, not only by their classroom teacher, but this year also by a specialist. So from the PE, or music, or our outdoor educator, so they'll all be paired up to really work, making sure that children are offered those learning opportunities in their general classroom and then across the school.
Great, thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So my initial question actually is for Dr. Duran. I know that you've done some work downstate at the Board of Education. I wonder whether you could just talk about these initiatives at the state level, just for a minute, so if there is any sort of corollary effort happening down there?
Well, their main corollary effort at the state board level is really around the SOAs, the Standards of Accreditation, that now have achievement gap measures, where we're looking at students not only from the perspective of the aggregate, and making sure that as schools are accredited fully or not accredited fully, that we are making sure that we have all students are being represented in that, and also around the area of growth for our learners that are particularly English-language learners. So there's a movement and an effort, a lot of work at the state level being done around, how do we ensure that we're capturing the progress they're making academically? So you saw this year, now for the first time, the use of the WEDA Assessment also as a different means of assessing a child's academic performance in English, and then also making sure that we're monitoring that in terms of celebrating it, certainly, but monitoring it where we're seeing gaps for students that have particularly...now even also introducing what we've been talking about in Fairfax for quite some time, CIF students, Students with Interrupted Formal Education, and bringing that into the mix, and looking, for example, also the work that's happening on the Standards of Quality, for the first time proposing now that English learners are brought into Standards of Quality based upon their English-language level, and not just looking at English-language learners as one aggregate group, because they are not, they are various needs. So those are the main things at the State Board of Ed that's happening. At the state level, though, there's a lot of work from the State Department, and Karen Corbett Sanders attended with me the State Equity Conference this year, where we were highlighting, they were highlighting a lot of the work, and actually, and I won't speak for you, but I know you went to separate sessions than I did, but they were actually turning to you and many times, and to me and many times, asking what we're doing. So they're actually trying to replicate some of the work we're doing here, and you saw and you heard about the other districts, Abermore County, Virginia Beach, Charlottesville, who are engaged now in the fourth grade Virginia Studies. So it's beginning at the state, I think we're a little bit further than that. We did learn at the state, again, also, the Student Ambassadors and Student Voice is an area, and that's where we learned in Reichel County. So those are the main things at the state level.
Well, that doesn't surprise me, it's an impressive amount of material you've just reviewed very quickly tonight, and it's really, really amazing, I think, and so it's not surprising to me that other systems are looking to us as a model on this. The next question I have actually is for anyone up here who wants to give their thoughts on this. So I'd like to just, most of the presentation's been very positive, but I would like to have you reflect a little bit on the challenges you've encountered in schools with leaders, teachers, students, and how have you overcome those challenges, and what challenges do you foresee in the future?
So I think, from a leader perspective, some of the challenges that I've seen in schools are just people feeling uncomfortable still to have some of these difficult conversations. I know one way that we approach it is that, you know, we're not experts in this subject. It's a journey, but I think as leaders, we have to be in a position to have uncomfortable conversations, especially with our staff, because it's impacting our students. So, you know, if we, as leaders, don't begin some of those uncomfortable conversations, then I don't know who will be.
I can also add that sometimes there's a challenge in all stakeholders valuing this type of professional learning, and having those critical and courageous conversations that can make a difference in a student, or a family, or even a coworker's life. Just the idea of valuing, building relationships, and supporting a colleague with having difficult conversations is not valued by all FCPS employees, so that's a challenge.
I would say another challenge, it was initially, as we're starting the work and how this is all new, how does equity fit into our school? That was one of the challenges, how does equity fit into our school? And it's been a challenge, it's a learning process, and I think with the Equity Reflection Tool, that's really going to give us, you know, some starting points. I would also say, being a teacher, also being an equity lead, there's not a lot of time that I do have in the school day to dedicate just to working on that equity piece. You know, I'm also a special education teacher. So there's not a lot of time in the school day, we attend professional developments after the school day, so just having that time dedicated to really getting into the work, that's been a little bit of a challenge as well.
I don't want to go too far down the rabbit hole, but I can say that our staff has been so warmly receptive of truly everything that Jess, and Kim, and I have brought to them. The children, there's no question, they are easy. We have more resistance coming from some of the parent population, and being an AAP center is one that always brings light to equity, and what it is and what it isn't. We haven't experienced a terrible amount of resistance, but there is sometimes pushback at a PTA meeting about how is that going to impact my child? And if this is for all, then what about mine, and what about this top, upper echelon of our students? So that would be the area that we receive a little bit of resistance, and have a lot more mindset shifting to do, and educating, and it's something that our Family Engagement Specialist has come to our PTA meetings to really try to open those windows, so that our families understand the work we're doing, and they respect and are alongside of us.
For me, the biggest challenge is really getting people to understand what equity is and what it is not, and the misnomers that are presented about what it is, and really we're working back towards this definition right here, that every child is reached, challenged, and prepared for success in school and life, is what we're all about. And yet, people want to turn equity into being something that it's not, and so that has been the challenge, I think. How do we create that narrative, the positive narrative around, we're just trying to meet every child, every family, every staff member where they are, and helping them get what they need? People want to make different assumptions, that it's only for a certain group, or that it's exclusion of other groups, it's really, how do we include everyone in this? There are some groups that have been excluded, the data shows us that, whether it's a discipline data, whether it's attendance data, whether it's achievement gap data, there are groups that have been excluded, and so we cannot forget that. But how do we build in the notion that this work is helping all of us, and helping us become one, truly, One Fairfax that's successful? And I go back to, in Mr. Renato Cofax referenced earlier, the beginning conversations in Skip. Those beginning conversations, one of the most powerful pieces there was when we looked at the economic studies that were done for Skip, and they showed us out in the out-years, if we didn't take care of every child, every resident, if we didn't look at everyone's needs, then we weren't going to be the same Fairfax that we are today. And there are many Fairfax residents who aren't, don't consider that they're a part of this county, and how do we include them, but that doesn't mean we're doing it to exclude others. And so that's the biggest challenge, I think, for us, is how do we help everyone understand that? And that takes time, and it takes resources, and it takes conversation, and it takes relationship building, and it takes sitting down and learning and listening to one another. I'm so thankful Dr. Brabran led his leadership conference with telling your why, and as people have begun to tell their why, and not every school's done it, but a lot of them have, and it's been transformative for people just to see, this is just, we're all in this for, trying to help out for a variety of reasons, we come to it from different perspectives, we have different beliefs, whether they're religious, political, whatever, put all those aside, what we're really trying to do is help meet every child. And if we can do that, then this work will really, really be work for the good of all of our county in the long term. But that often gets caught up in a lot of noise, and a lot of misunderstandings, and a lot of narratives that really aren't about helping us do this work.
And so, Dr. Duran, and maybe Ms. Eddy, are you able to look down the road and see, you know, this is likely going to be a challenge point for us as we move forward to the implementation of this? That's the part that, I mean, I appreciate everybody talking about the problems they've experienced, but that's, as a board member, I'd like to be able to get some visibility in terms of where you're headed, and where you think, you know, in a year or two years from now, or as we do this piece of it, we've seen in other school systems, that this is where the conflict...
Well, I think that it will continue to be an area of challenge, but what we're, and Ms. Corbett Sanders can tell you this in the conference we're at, we're ahead in that we've built it into our strategic plan, it's part of our metrics, it's part of our work. I remember Ms. Corbett Sanders and I were sitting in a breakout session, sideboring and talking about how so many of the districts and divisions we're presenting, we're talking about equity as solely something separate. And Ms. Corbett Sanders, I don't know if you remember, you leaned over and you said, you know, "I'm so glad we do this as one thing," you know, "it's part of our work." And so the more we can do that, the more we can build the part of our work, the more it's not a separate issue and a separate topic. I even, you know, feel, I understand why we're here talking about Office of Equity Update, but I almost feel like this should be part of all of our discussions, it shouldn't be a separate work session just on equity, this should be in everything that we're talking about, and it shouldn't be a separate work session. I understand why it is, though, because it's the first year, but that's where I see the long term is not having a work session that's on equity, but having every work session where we're talking about, no matter what the topic is, are we meeting every child's needs? Are we meeting every staff's needs? And that shouldn't be a separate work session, that should be part of everything. So that, long term, is where I think we can get. We're not there yet, we have to talk about it a different way, it involves resources, which I'm very thankful, and everyone up here is very thankful for, everyone in the audience is very thankful for, the resources that this board has committed to being able to make all these things happen, because everything we presented here would not have happened if it weren't for your commitment and your leadership in providing us with the ability to do what we've done.
Okay, thank you. Just so you know, we have Mr. Moon, the Michels, and then a couple of go-bags. Mr. Moon?
I'm going to be brief, it's already eight o'clock, you probably all want to do something else. So I have a question I'll ask you to Ms. Eddy, and then, one I'll ask you to Mr. Perry. Ms. Eddy, I just wanted to make sure that I heard you correctly on this one. So if you could tell us again about those 13 units, World History, did you say 10 units and three units? Just tell us again one more time.
So when I said units, I really should have, you know, addressed actual standards. So oftentimes, the standards connect directly to units, though they don't have to be created that way. So of the standards in World History and Geography II, there are nine standards focused on European areas and events, and three standards focused on non-European areas and events.
That's a tour, not 13?
So standard one is a historical and social science skills standard that sets up inquiry through primary source work and that kind of thing.
So it's basically nine to three, nine and three, and one's applicable to all?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you. I thought I heard 10 and three, so I wondered about that, as, you know, a percentage of population of Europeans in the world is about 10%, correct? Meanwhile, if nine units are devoted to the world history, perhaps in the eyes or views of Europeans, as opposed to the other 25%, which constitutes 90% of population around the world, I think we have a really, really long way to go. We may need to, until we get to that point, that we may want to labor our world history class, world history in the eyes of Europeans, that should be, not someone else, but Europeans. Okay. Now, this one goes to Mr. Perry. Your slide number 23, 374 contacts. Have we done any program evaluation in your office? Program evaluation of your office, not yet, correct? Have we ever conducted any satisfaction survey by the customers?
We have not.
Okay, okay, then, it's a very unfair question to you, that among those 374 contacts, from your view, how satisfied are you with the way you had been able to help those who contacted you?
That's a very fair question, and in the first year, that's one of the, as we reflect on our first year, one of the challenges and one of the thoughts that we have as we continue on. And in fact, we've been speaking about creating an optional feedback survey tool, where a caller, a parent, we call them visitors in the world of the Ombuds, has the opportunity to share their thoughts with us. And so that is something that we're looking at for the future, always respecting the confidentiality, and recognizing that because it's such a challenging situation, sometimes people may not get back to us. But one piece of data that I can share, and we were looking at this just last week, we've had approximately 30 parents have re-engaged with us for a second issue. So of those 374, those aren't necessarily 374 individuals, if you subtract, at least 30 of them came back to us with a completely different situation, which suggests to me, at least anecdotally, that that group of folks felt that the services and the supports that we offered were beneficial, so much so that they came back to us.
Okay, so since I only have 25 seconds left, then I'm going to be quick. So we have not conducted client satisfaction survey yet, which we should, but since you're on this side, you are the one in charge of your office, from your perspective, how satisfied are you for bringing solutions or helping these clients with your contacts?
I am very satisfied with the supports that we have offered, and it comes from the anecdotal reports of parents. And I think one of the privileges that I have in this role is the time that I'm able to spend with parents. to spend with parents. Our school administrators, our school staff are so incredibly busy, but that I have the luxury of being able to spend 45 minutes on the phone with a parent who is critically concerned and upset, and some where, when I have no ability to actually affect change, but I can direct them. And when they walk away saying, "Thank you for listening, and I know now what my options are in Fairfax, and I have a plan," as opposed to before when I would, I mean, if we recognize 374, those were 374 people who didn't know where to go. So, a lot of our other parents, of course, are very well-connected, do know where they want to go. So, the fact that these folks could call us and walk away saying, "At least I know what my next steps are," I think adds great benefit.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Schultz?
I just have to, I have one question and one comment. How many classrooms do we have? Do you know?
How many individual classrooms? No, I don't off the top of my head. Marty, do? No, I don't, I don't know.
Dr. Persidio, do you know? Okay, I'd like an answer to that as a, as a follow-up. I remember getting that as a statistic in the past, and I don't, I don't recall what it is. If you could, could you please pull up the Equity Reflection Tool? Okay, it's an attachment on, in Board Docs. You can go to the second page. Bottom left, yep. Go to the second page in the section that says Instruction and Placement. Keep going, keep going. So, right in the middle, "Students are exposed to perspectives and contributions of people of color and women in every subject area. Universally, boys are falling behind in education. They're falling behind in elementary school, middle school, high school, college, and graduate school." I am offended, as a mother of four boys, that something that is called an equity lens specifically eliminates half of our students. You need to fix it, because the boys are the ones who are falling behind in our educational system. Fewer boys go to college, fewer boys graduate from college, fewer boys go to graduate school. Boys are struggling in the United States of America, and boys of all colors. And we have ensured by this that we're gonna highlight girls over boys. It's not a good look. That's all.
Okay, thank you. I think we have one go-back, at least, maybe another. Ms. Kees Camaro?
Okay, I will be quick, because it is really late. This goes to one of the questions, statements, I think you said, Ms. Castillo, from what, one of the problems was, which I could have anticipated, was, I personally believe that when we do this kind of work, it raises everybody's vote. But I think that getting across that others, those students who are already thriving actually benefit from this is, is some work that we also have to do. And so, how do we, I'd like to talk about how we are able to communicate that. And I'm sure there are a number of ways. I think I've seen some research on, you know, emotional well-being and healthier relationships and whatever, but I do think we need to do that work, and also working on how, so as a next step, I'd like to know how we're communicating, not just the work of your office, Dr. Duran, but also the work of the Ombudsman, right? How are we getting out to parents that this is available? I'm very excited about it being available to our staff members as well, but I'm concerned about them believing that it's confidential, and that it won't come back in some form of retaliation. And so, I'd like to see what we can do, or what the plan is to try to bring about that reassurance. And just, I recall looking at the Project Momentum records, and I noticed, as you said, Dr. Duran, where the needle had been moving quite a bit. And so, I would love, as a next step, to see those improvements, as well as what those changes, if we could just get a report on what has changed since this work has happened. I don't know if that's, excuse me, part of a plan or not. The last thing came about, listening to you, as you started talking about how your, as a result of Mr. McAlveen's question, about how you really were involving the international curriculum. And I'm not sure it's appropriate here, but I'd like to, I can imagine that if parents knew their students would be going to a school that could be considered in having an international focus, that would be a real selling point. And so, I'd like to play around with that, Dr. Braybrand, Dr. Braybrand. I'm looking at you. It's after eight, forgive me. You heard what I said.
I felt included.
You felt included. Okay. I'd like to play around with that a little bit, because I know that there are different ways that we need to market ourselves, that we need to make sure parents know what is available in our schools. And so, I just think that is a great selling point. So, I'm happy to see that it's already being done, but how can we use that perhaps in other places?
All right, Ms. McLoughlin had a go-back.
I did, since I ran out of time. I did want to give a shout-out to our Ombudsman and to Dr. Duran. Thank you so much. I know I've been beating the drum that I wanted to ensure we had Ombudsman Services for our employees. As one of 12 board members, and having served for eight years now, employees have come to board members when they just weren't quite sure that they could bring their concern forward without fear of potential retaliation to their careers. And so, you know, Dr. Braybrand, you're to be commended as well, because I know you were listening, and keeping a careful ear, that you believe in a caring culture. And I think having this Ombudsman Services for Employees, that speaks to it with action. I also want to tell my colleagues that our Ombudsman, Mr. Perry and I, met with Supervisor John Cook, and you can now see it on the Channel 16, or whatever it is the board supervisors have, but we were there for one of his broadcast shows where we got to showcase and talk about the Ombudsman Services and just what FCPS is trying to do to continue creating this caring cultural environment. So, we really had a great time on that show, and I wanted to make sure you all knew that that had taken place, and was just a great reflection, again, of our schools and what we're trying to do. And then, I would just ask that once you are up and running with the employer services or employee services through the Ombudsman Office, please, please engage this board. You know, I've got, I've got your Ombudsman brochure. I've been taking them to PTA meetings and handing them out, so our families can see this. But to my colleagues, I know we have an amazing opportunity to push information out through our electronic communications, and so, I think being able to raise awareness will be really critical. And then, finally, as Ms. Schultz noted, there's a number of us on the board who are parents of all boys. I grew up in a family of all girls, so it's been a very interesting experience as a parent to see what that lived experience is for boys in school. And while I loved, loved being in school, and my three boys were fortunate to do well in school academically, they didn't love sitting for almost seven hours a day. It was, they, they were those active-type boys who said, "This is almost torture to do this for long periods of time." And so, when we talk about just being mindful that when we see statistics of boys, boys of color, boys with special education needs, so disproportionately represented in our subgroups of either having discipline challenges, not thriving academically to their capacity, I just wanted to echo what Ms. Schultz had said, that we want to empower each and every child, but let's not forget that for some time, we're seeing that our traditional model of instruction disproportionately, I think, affects boys really be successful.
Okay, well, thank you very, oh, yes, we had one more.
Just very quickly, thank you for getting the brochures out there. We are currently working on employee brochures and employee flyers, and we will be reaching out to all those groups that support employees across the division, the associations, and we will be getting the word out to them, including the, hopefully on the Intranet. So, that'll be available to employees, but thank you.
Okay, well, thank you all very much. I will just add a couple.
I did, I did have a next up. And, and the reason I have that, the reason I have that is we have an equity audit that's four pages long. I want to know what the workload is to teachers to have a four-page-long equity audit in every single classroom in this county.
All right, so the next, the next step?
We can certainly provide, well, are we in next steps?
Okay, yeah. I guess we will do, yeah, I think we had a couple.
Because the Equity Reflection Tool is not done by individual teachers, it's done by the team, but we can provide more clarity on how it's used and what it, and how it's done.
Okay.
Because it's the equity team at each school. There's one equity team for the school, and with the leadership team, so that would be one per school, but we can certainly provide more information.
Since three of us asked about that, I think that would be helpful.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Could we increase the print just a little bit? Some of us, if it's possible or not? Okay, thank you. All right, so, helpful to understand how many calls in each of the categories. Ask staff to provide a planning tool of all equity modules. Okay.
Two separate.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. One is regarding, 59, the first part of it is for the Ombudsman. The second part is, so then, that should be 59. Give us how many calls in each of the categories by region for the Ombudsman. Then, there's a second next step, is please define each of the five modules, so that we know.
Okay, so define the five modules, okay.
That are referenced.
Okay.
And then, the third piece is regarding the Equity Reflection Tool. That's where we get into, are there any trends associated with it? What are the findings and recommendations? Are there common themes across schools?
So, this is the third, so it is to provide trends?
It's more, it's provide trends, feedback, and feedback on the findings and recommendations that are coming out of the use of this reflection tool. See, I'm not calling it an audit.
Okay, so provide trends and feedback from, as a result of the Equity Reflection Tool.
Provide trends on the findings and recommendations, or something like that.
Okay. Is that right?
On the recommendations, trends, common themes, findings and recommendations on the reflection tool.
Okay, on the reflection tool.
Using, yeah. You know what I want.
All right.
I understand.
All right, on the reflection tool, and then, take the rest off, what you said.
There are a number of others.
Let her get caught up. Okay, there we go. Thank you. All right, now, all right?
I think number 64 can be added to it.
Oh.
Yes.
Yeah, or we can take it off? 64 would be?
64 should be added to 61, because it's the same tool. We're still talking about the same thing.
Just stick it in there.
When I was talking about disaggregating the data, it wasn't from the reflection tool, it was from the Ombudsman's office.
Right.
It's 59.
So, the disaggregate piece goes to 59.
Okay.
Just reference, just so we remember, 59, the Ombudsman Report.
Okay, all right, 59 has to do with the Ombudsman Report, okay. All right.
Correct. That should say, we should put the word Ombudsman.
I think I'll remember, but at 8:30, I don't, I forget.
Okay, this is regarding the Ombudsman. Okay. And 59, we need to put in there, in parentheses, something Ombudsman.
Right.
So, we know that that's what that.
Calls to the Ombudsman.
Okay.
And that should be both KCS and TDK.
Okay, all that. Okay, so going on, I think we're down to 62?
Real quick, sorry, so on 61, we don't need to disaggregate on 61 then, right?
No.
Okay.
Okay, oh, so we can take off the disaggregate information to make it more impactful. Okay, so, all right, so we take that part off. Thank you. So, that's cleaned up? Okay, and then we have 62?
62, I would actually take the first part of the sentence from 65 and add it to 62, because it's all talking about the same thing.
Okay, so we'll combine that, and add it to 62. All right, stick it there.
Okay, so those go together. And then, if you, I can look at my other one, you let me know what you want.
Okay, well, you, I can't read it very well.
Okay, so 64, you could delete it there, and so, that, 65, no, 64 isn't mine. Go ahead.
Yes, because we already included it.
Okay, okay.
Yes, we do delete 64.
Yes, because we included it in the show.
Okay, so, the new 64 has to do with just, if we could have some idea how parents are being made aware, is what I'm trying to achieve here.
Okay, how parents are being aware of what's happening in our schools.
Made aware of.
Of the Ombudsman Office, the equity work?
No, that was, that had to do with the Ombudsman's Office.
How parents can be more aware of the Ombudsman Office.
Right, and also, there was two parts to it, but we'll get past this one first.
Okay, so that, this one, 64, is make parents aware of the Ombudsman Office.
Now, he may be doing it already. I just need to know, I need to, I think the board needs to know how that's happening. And then, the second part of it is?
Okay, wait, 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 make sure that everybody gets caught up.
Make parents aware of what is happening in our schools, and how it can be used.
Of the Ombudsman Office.
Make parents aware of services from the Ombudsman's Office, I think is more accurate.
Okay, of the services.
Offered by, offered by the Ombudsman.
Right, correct. And then, the second part.
Wait, 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 wait.
I know.
I know, it's, okay, fine.
Okay, Ombudsman Office. And the second part is, how are we assuring our employees? I mean, what, what is the plan? A, to communicate to employees that they can now use the Ombudsman, and two, assure them that, of confidentiality and no retaliation.
Got it.
Okay.
So, Karen, you need to go back to 62. I think that we need to reword that a little bit, just since this work has happened, and provide measurable outcomes.
Okay, report on improvements per equity work.
And it just, yeah, and provide, right?
I don't think that's where it goes, but as long as Dr. Duran understands, I think that's.
Well, you want, you want, you wanted measurable outcomes.
I wanted measurable outcomes.
So, I think if you just say, and provide, provide measurable outcomes.
Okay, report on improvements and measurable outcomes.
And the second part, do you need the second part have examples on what equity?
No.
Just delete that, okay.
Right. So, I would put, report on improvements and measurable outcomes for the Equity Office, and that will give me the information I'm looking for.
Period, okay.
Okay, we got it? Thank you. All right, so then, the last one is from Ms. Schultz.
No, mine, mine's being skipped over, because it's bookended by hers, so mine was 63. So, I read it, it's fine, but the one thing I wanted to add, because I got the name of it, is for tracking purposes, I do want staff to talk about when we're looking at either the interconnection with the county, put in parentheses, two courses.
Okay, so in parentheses, after county.
Yeah, after county, put in parentheses, two courses, colon, dimensions of diversity.
64 isn't down, I can't.
And the healing of racism. Those are the two courses they're doing, and I, I want specifically to get details, since I've heard great things about those two courses on the county side. I want to make sure we're capturing and getting that information from them.
That part makes sense, just a point of clarification, and participating in the modules, what is that? What information?
Thank you. That in going forward, if you can send information to board members of how we can potentially participate, yeah, so it should be a 64 then.
Got it.
Got it.
Provide information to board members.
On how to participate in the modules.
Yeah, no worries. The very last part where it says, "And participating in modules," just break that off into a new request.
Information for board members to participate in modules.
No, yeah, provide information to board members about participating.
Got it.
In the, will we call them equity modules? What are you guys calling it?
Modules is fine.
Modules, you'll get it, okay.
Okay, and then, Michels, you're, you have the last one. Can you clarify that a little bit? Say, what is the workload on teachers implementing in schools, and how many?
Implementing, implementing the equity, what do you call it?
Reflection tool.
Equity reflection tool.
All right. No, no, they've already changed it.
We call it a reflection tool. The document we found was called an audit.
All right.
Apparently, an audit is, you know, diversity soul-crushing, so we're just gonna call it a tool, because that's gonna make it easier.
We don't use it the way that other places do, as an audit. We use it as a reflection.
All right, okay. All right, so is everybody clear on what they're asking? And Dr. Duran, you know?
I am, but there's still one that wasn't put up there.
Okay, fine.
Okay, it had to do with, at least I don't think it was, it had to do with parents. What is the plan for our employees? Should be broke out into a separate one. Make parents aware of services, this should not be attached to that. What is the plan for our employees? What is the plan to communicate the Ombudsman Services to our employees and ensure confidentiality?
You want the employees separate from the?
I want it separate from 65.
You want a 66 to be, what is the plan for communicating to employees and the confidentiality and all that?
Right, yes, correct.
Okay, we just wanted to catch up.
Okay.
Otherwise, I think it's confusing.
I understand.
So what is the plan to communicate to our employees, the Office of the Ombudsman Okay, so we did it.
Excellent.
All right, well, great, and thank you all very, very much.
Thanks to this team here, who's been here since 3 o'clock, so thanks them.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much.
I would've been here anyway, but they were here.